Welcome, everyone. I hope you had a chance to sign up if you'd like to speak this evening. I see a lot of new faces in here. Welcome. We're gonna begin. If you're on the hallway, there's still seats in here if you want to come sit down. She doesn't? She took off running. Here we go. Notice is hereby given pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, that the City of Smithville will conduct a council meeting and a public hearing on October 14, 2025, at 6:00 PM at City Hall, located at 317 Main Street, Smithville, Texas, 78957. I call this meeting to order. I will lead with the invocation. We gather this evening with thankful hearts for the many blessings we have been given by our beloved town here in Smithville, its peoples, its people, its spirit, and the deep sense of community that makes it all feel like home. Lord, we ask you for your guidance and your wisdom upon all of us who serve this community. May every decision made tonight reflect honesty, fairness, and the care for the people who call Smithville, Texas, their home. We especially lift up our city manager, Robert Tamble, as he enters retirement. Thank you, Lord, for his years of dedication, leadership, and service to our community. Bless him with health, happiness, and peace in his next chapter of life. Bless our town, bless our families and our first responders, our veterans, our school, and every person who works to make Smithville a place of kindness and promise. Let unity and respect guide our hearts as we work together for the common good. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Next, we have a proclamation for Municipal Court Week. Will you please lead us? Jimmy Jenkins?
Yes. In recognition of Municipal Court Week, November 3 through the 7th, 2025, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, and whereas most people come in contact with municipal court than any other Texas courts combined, and the public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, and whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Smithville Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. And whereas the procedures for the Smithville Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas, and whereas the City of Smithville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel will comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary, and whereas Smithville municipal judges are not policymakers for the City of Smithville but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees, and whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Smithville Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore...
It is resolved by the City Council of the City of Smithville, Texas, that the week of November 3 through the 7th, 2025, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Smithville. Our next proclamation is recognition of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please lead us, Kathy.
In recognition of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer for women in the United States and remains the second-leading cause of cancer death among American women, over 42,000 women will die from breast cancer in the U.S. in 2025, and whereas breast cancer makes up more than 15% of all new annual cancer cases in the U.S., making it the most common cancer for women nationally, and whereas mammography and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment are believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer, and whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause, and whereas the Smithville Community Clinic, the Smithville Public Library, and Abundant Grace Community Church, as part of the Rural Whole Health Coalition, will work to increase community access to healthcare resources to improve cancer outcomes, and whereas we recognize that over 4 million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope for a better future. Now, therefore, we support for those who continue to cope with breast cancer. I, Sharon Forrester, Mayor, Smithville, Texas, on behalf of the city council, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure, and so doing hereby proclaim October 25, October 2025, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a presentation from Smithville, Texas News.
Can you hear me, council? Can you guys hear me? Good. All right. Hello, everyone. I'm gonna kind of do one of these. My name is Kristin Meriwether. I am the publisher of Smithville, Texas News, where your story is our story. And council, thank you for the time today. I know we got a long agenda. A show of hands by everybody who here has ever felt frustrated by the media, and it's okay to please raise your hand. I'm raising my hand, and I'm a member of the media. What I've learned is people don't actually hate journalism, or journalists, or even the media. They hate feeling misled. They hate being lied to, and they hate the rage that they feel after reading the news. And that's what frustrates me, too, because for me, journalism was supposed to be about truth and connection. So here I am as a baby, December of 1981, reading the paper with my dad, and this love for news has kind of stayed with me. I remember as a kid, I'd be playing outside with my friends. I'd actually come inside to come watch the news, which is kind of a weird thing for a five- or six-year-old to do, but I did that. Slide, please. And, but these journalists were my heroes. This is Peter Jennings, Tom Brokaw, Dan Rather, Barbara Walters, John Sosil, people. I think most people in there, you guys would know who these people were. And so to me, I admired them because they stood for something: fairness, accountability, and courage. But that kind of journalism has all but disappeared. Somewhere along the way, the goal stopped being the truth and instead became traffic and clicks. I cannot change what's going on at the national level, but I can control myself. And so I asked myself, what if we brought journalism back to what it was supposed to be right here in Smithville? Slide, please. And so that's why I started Smithville, Texas News, not to be "the media," but to rebuild trust through fairness, transparency, and local storytelling that reminds us we're all on the same team. So how am I gonna make this happen? I'm gonna do this the old-fashioned way, by showing up. You'll see me sitting in that chair at every meeting, even the really long ones. I will talk to people, even when they're mean and angry, and I'll ask questions, even when it costs me access. And I'll tell the stories that make Smithville shine, from what's going on here at City Hall to what our Tigers and Lady Tigers are doing on game day. And here's what that action looks like, or here's what that looks like in action. And as I explain these distribution channels, I invite you to think about how groups or organizations you're working with can utilize this information, can utilize this to get information out in the community. You know, how can, how can, sorry, how can it help from an economic development standpoint? And I hope we can spitball a few ideas at the end. Next slide, please. So the first is the website. I kind of like to think of this as a digital billboards for Smithville. It's where residents can go to see what's going on in the community, and that makes your work as council members more transparent, which helps garner trust. It's also a great way to advertise our community to people who don't live here. I don't know if anybody else does this. I may be a weirdo, but when I'm going somewhere, I'll actually go and check like the local news of the town, and if it's filled with a bunch of like crime or negative stories, it makes me anxious about going to visit that town. And then anyone who's going to invest real money in Smithville is going to look at the news of what's going on. So, you know, I invite you, what are some high-quality stories that I could tell that we can kind of put on this billboard? What would you guys like to see? Next slide, please. In 2025, I think it's incredibly important for a news organization to have an audio distribution channel. So I created the Smithville Minute on Spotify, and it goes out Monday through Friday at 7:07 in the morning, and it's a great way to catch up on all the local news, weather, sports, every weekday morning, and it's just one or two minutes, and it's 100% Smithville all the time. I'm just gonna play you the intro. This is, I don't know if this is gonna work. Let's try.
Good morning, Smithville. It's 7:07 on Tuesday, October 14th, and here's your Smithville Minute. I hope you enjoyed your Columbus Day holiday off. I took Manny for a walk after lunch yesterday, and then what is absolutely picture-perfect. Today's gonna be more of the same, so enjoy your morning in the low 60s and high in the low 90s. And now, on to the news.
All right. So I, you know, it kind of has like that small-town feel, that charm, and it's short enough that residents can listen to on the way to school. I think there's a lot of potential with this particular medium. You know, is this something you guys as council members, would you guys be willing to do something long-form where you come on and talk about an issue in the community? You know, if there's like a big event coming to town, is that something that we could promote on that? And I know you guys are always looking for volunteers. Is this a way that we can use that? Again, I think it's just short, sweet, and in the morning. Next slide, please. So the YouTube channel, most of us sitting in this room, or there's some, there's some extra people in this time, but some of us sitting in this room are, we're regulars at council meetings. We understand what motions are, what a variance is, and all the technical jargon, but most residents don't understand the language that's on the agenda. So I wanted to create video recaps of the meetings and try to explain what happens at a council meeting in layman's terms. Some of you guys know me, some of you don't. I am a total goofball by nature. I try to, so at the beginning, I try to make little jokes or something funny at the start to try to hook people in. So I'm gonna show you probably one of the dumber ones that I've done. So, once I get people laughing and engaged, I can then explain government actions in ways that are easy to understand. So, sorry. Like with the podcast, I do think there's an opportunity for longer videos. I really think this, this town's got a lot of history, and so you guys have been here a lot longer than me. So, you know, is there, how can we explore the rich history in some of these videos? I'd love to hear some of your ideas. So, next slide, please. So the Weekend Guide is a new product for me, but I do think it's a great vehicle for sharing the amazing things that our local businesses are doing and try to get people downtown spending their money. So I had a meeting with Jill Shrewby just a couple weeks ago, and she ended up sharing the guide, the first one that we had on the city's Facebook page, I think it was two weekends ago, and I really greatly appreciated that. I think it was great for the city to kind of showcase, hey, look at all the cool stuff that we're doing, and it was really good for visibility for me as well. And so I think the guide is only as good as the events that I put in it. So I would love to get your input from any organizations or things that you think would be beneficial to add to that. Next slide, please. So the opinion section, I created this a little over a month ago as a way to combat the ugly discourse that was occurring on social media. I've been pretty disappointed. I haven't really gotten, I've gotten no submissions, and no one's even asked any questions about it. So I do know it's way easier to sling arrows on social media, but if anybody would like to have civilized public discourse, this is a space for it. And council, if you guys want to advocate for something to the community, this is also for that. You know, Councilmember Jenkins, you and I had talked about the EDC potentially being something, you'd put something on the, I think it was Facebook or Nextdoor, and the comments were not what I would consider engaging. So in the future, this kind of stuff, I think, would be a place that you could have civil discourse. So, next slide, please. Thank you. And then every Friday afternoon, I send out the newsletter. It has all the stories I put together for the week. I kind of think of it as the paper, you know, we used to get the weekly paper once a week. This is the digital version. And since part of my mission is to document the history of town, I'm working with Judy at the library to achieve this. So at each meeting, we have an agenda, a packet, the meeting minutes, which are voted on, and then I'll have whatever my stories are. And so we're finding a way to have a complete historical record of what's going on. So there's actually a training that we're going to, I think it's in three weeks, and so I'll let you guys know how it goes, that archiving. And then this is where I'm at as a company. It grows every day. I got two subscribers today. I was super excited, two paid subscribers. And the people who read it are usually fairly appreciative. This is, the one at the bottom is a comment I got over the weekend. So when I started Smithville, Texas News, it wasn't because I wanted to be "the media." It was because I wanted to fix what the media had broken, right here in the place that I call home. I wanted to rebuild trust through fairness, connection, and accountability, because when residents understand what's happening, they engage more constructively. When they are shown good leadership, they spend less time tearing it down online. And when they're informed, our whole community wins. Thank you for letting me share what I'm building, and I'd love to hear from you. What kind of stories or information do you think would make your job easier, and how can I better support the city's communication goals? So that's all I've got. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Next item is update from Langford Community Management Services on Grants. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, Robert. Thanks for inviting me out here and being able to provide you guys updates on y'all's current grants. As you have the spreadsheet, I'm just gonna work my way down to give you the following updates. Starting off with the GLO mitigation competition grant. This one has been broken up into four parts. As you know, the first part, the Northeast-Northwest Second Street Drainage Improvements have been completed. That was done in July of this year. The next one was the Loop 230 Detention Pond, where we are wrapping up work. We have our pump station startup scheduled for tomorrow, and they anticipate completing work by the end of this month. The third part is the 4th through 6th Street Drainage Improvements. We just procured M&amp;C Fonseca, and we had our pre-construction meeting just last month. And they are planning to start in the next couple of weeks on the construction and anticipate to complete by March of 2026. The last part of that grant is gonna be the Southeast Drainage Improvements. We're currently finalizing some of the acquisition on that part, and then we anticipate to going out to bid in January of 2026 on that project. Next is our GLO Method of Distribution Grant. This one is the Detention Pond Drainage Improvements over by the Smithville High School. We are currently under about 30% on our design completion, and we anticipate going out to bid on this project in spring of 2026. Next, we have our TD, oh, sorry, the Resiliency Community Plan. On that one, I believe we anticipate council and public approval by end of this year, beginning of January of 2026. Under your TDA, your Rural Economic Development, that's the Innovation Center. I drove bypass on my way in, and it looks wonderful. They plan on finishing it up by the end of this month as well. Your TDA Fast Row, that is the 22 vehicles that the city was awarded. I believe all vehicles have been delivered except for six, which are anticipated to be delivered this week pending the tax office release of plates. Next is your Home Program, which you guys are very well aware of. There was three houses that were approved and pending construction. I believe the last move out is the end of this month for that third property, and then we'll be able to start construction. Onto your Tedom Projects versus those generators. This one, there was a change in the generator size that will need to be approved by FEMA before we can put the project out for bid. We're currently waiting on TRC to provide that change of scope of work to submit to FEMA. Last is your Department of Energy Grid Resiliency Grant. This one is a newer program and is currently under review by the Department of Energy. We did receive an RFI that has been answered at the beginning of this month, and it's just a waiting game. This is a newer program, so, you know, it may take a little bit before we get any more questions or communications from the Department of Energy. Is there any specific questions regarding any of the grants? I know Robert does a great job keeping you guys up to date on everything.
I have one question about the Rural Economic Development for the Innovation Center.
Yes, sir.
When I drove by it last week, there seemed to be quite a bit of stuff that still needed to be done, and I'm noticing the end date for this month. What happens if that doesn't get done?
That's a great question. The TDA is not allowing any more extensions on this. Angela, who is your point of contact with Langford, she is staying on top of them to guarantee that they will complete by the end of this month. I believe it's just some inside work that needs to be done on that.
With that, does the liability fall back to the city or the contractor?
It would fall back, well, your contract with the contractor ends at a certain time, so you could hold them accountable for it. But grant-wise, it would fall on the city to complete that work. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, Langford has been a very keen presence in the last decade here. There's $20 million of grants that she just reviewed with y'all, and most of which are very small matches, with the exception of the DOE GRG grant, which is a 49 and 1/2% match. But we haven't been awarded that yet, still under consideration. That's the grant that's going to bury all of the power lines behind Main Street in the alley, Loop 230, all the way back to First. So significant, but yeah, as are all of these grants. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert, it's been wonderful working with you on these as well. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you. Next items is Discussion and Action on the Approval of the Minutes from September 8, 2025 Council Meeting, Public Hearing, September 10, 2025, Special Call Council Meeting, September 17, 2025, Special Call Council Meeting, September 24, 2025, and a Special Call Council Meeting on the October 7, 2025, Special Call Council Meeting. I'll entertain a motion if you had time to read all that fun stuff.
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of the minutes for the September 8, 2025 Council Meeting and Public Hearing, September 10, 2025, Special Call Council Meeting, September 17, 2025, Special Call Council Meeting, September 24, 2025, Special Call City Council Meeting, and the October 7, 2025, Special Call Council Meeting.
I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made in second. All in favor. One, two. It is approved. Okay. We're gonna go ahead with General Comments, and then I'm gonna move some stuff around on the agenda.
I don't have anybody signed up for General Comments.
That was easy. Okay. So at this time... Are they? All right, AS. So should I just go on with the MOU? The 22? I'm gonna jump to item number 22.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We may want to do 14 before we do the others. Parliamentary procedures. We may want to vote on that. Before the others.
Okay, we're gonna go to item number 14. Discussion and Action on Ordinance Meeting, Amending Article 1 City of Smithville Code of Ordinances to Adopt Section 1.03.032 Rules of Parliament Procedure. Any questions?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending Article 1 City of Smithville Code of Ordinances to Adopt Section 1.03.032 Rules of Parliamentary Procedure.
I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made in second. All in favor. It is approved.
Mayor, may I ask a question on item... Two, in the Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, it says that we are going to have to use a voice roll call on that unless we move to suspend that for the meeting?
I did not realize, we had spoke of this, and I did not realize that it was still in there, the roll call. Do we want to?
Well, we just approved it, so...
So did I? We do roll call?
So we can vote to suspend that for tonight's meeting? If I, I'll make a motion right now that we suspend a requirement for voice roll call tonight? If you would entertain that motion?
I'll entertain a motion, and then we will get it back on the agenda to change that because we had spoke about that in the meeting, and I did not catch it.
Well, it's easily rectified. We just vote to suspend. And sometimes there are items on the agenda that do require it, so, I mean, it's easy enough for tonight. Mayor, I move that we suspend Rule Number Two, requiring a voice roll call vote on motions.
Second.
A motion has been made in second. All in favor. Okay, that is approved. Are you good, Jennifer? Okay, here we go. Now we're going to item number 22. Discussion and Action on a Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Smithville and Aquifer Storage and Recovery. Would y'all come forward, please?
Do you want me to read this part?
Do you have a presentation, or?
I do not have a presentation, but I'm available for any questions that you have.
Okay. Mayor and Council, I'll give you the background and citizens. This is folks from Austin Water. We've been working with them for quite some time regarding the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Retrieval System, ASR. And part of this, we have been identified as other entities within the county stakeholder, as a stakeholder. And if we want to continue having a seat at the table, this memorandum of understanding or agreement will allow us to have that seat at the table and receive information that otherwise would not be given out to the public with respect to test results, various items as they go through the process of determining whether or not ASR is a viable project in Bastrop County. Approving this MOU does not say that you're for or against ASR. It allows us to have a seat at the table going forward on the Technical Advisory Committee, so forth and so on. Mr. Councilmember Jenkins has been supporting the ASR meetings in parallel with myself, but as I'm stepping down, he will continue on the advisory committee unless you make the decision otherwise. So that's the background of this. I hope I did that right.
You did a great job.
Yes, it does not mean that we agree with it. It just means we have a seat at the table going forward so that we get the information here in Smithville, so that we can look at it, dissect it, and see what direction they're going. So I wanted to make sure that is understood.
Well, I would like to make one comment because this is something that I heard in all of the meetings all over. I want y'all to know that Phase 1 is the desktop analysis that will be done in the laboratory. Am I correct? Have you already done this? We...
Correct. So I'll weigh in, and I'm felt to introduce.
The, the, uh, analysis that's gonna be done in the laboratory cannot move forward unless that is proven. Am I correct? All the rest of this will go away if you do not prove the testing that is in the laboratory.
Correct.
Okay. That is something that was just jumbled up at all the meetings, and it did not come out like it should have. So, wasn't your fault. It was, it was just a lot of static.
Agreed. No, thank you. Thank you all. And just to introduce myself, my name is Randy Jenkins. I am a deputy director at Austin Water and appreciate the opportunity to join you all this evening and have this item heard and considered. So to your point, Mayor Pro Tim Jenkins, that is correct. This agreement is for the next three years so that we can do laboratory testing. This does not approve the project beyond that. The test results will be shared with those that come along with us and are participating as stakeholders through this agreement. Yeah.
I just wanted to add one thing. Hello, my name is Marisa Fledis Gonzalez, and I'm the supervisor of the Water Resources Team at Austin Water, and we're helping. I'm very sorry. And, um, sure, okay. So I'm the supervisor of the Water Resources Team at Austin Water. Our team is helping to support the technical components of this project. We have committed to sharing the results of the field testing publicly. A key component of this agreement is having the ability to have a technical representative and participation on the Technical Advisory Group that will be providing input into the methods that we'll use for testing, the protocols, and will be providing kind of guidance as this process rolls along. So from the very beginning through the end of the phase, also having the ability to provide recommendations about how the project may move forward past the field testing phase, whether and how the project may move forward past the field testing phase. Those recommendations will be then conveyed to Austin City Council.
If my, if I may ask, why do we need this memorandum of understanding?
Well, it really is to serve the community. There's been, through our stakeholder engagement, there's been a lot of ask about what this project could provide to the community and ensuring that we aren't utilizing eminent domain, things of that nature. So this agreement really spells out how the Technical Advisory Group will work and how we will share those lab results, and then also the things that we will provide through this project into the future.
So you're, you're saying that if we don't approve this memorandum, that we don't get a seat at the table?
You don't have a seat at the table through the Technical Advisory Group.
So the overwhelming feedback I've received so far is I have gotten no positive feedback for this. So if you want to sway me or other people, I think you would want to give us a seat at the table regardless of whether we sign a memorandum?
We will continue community engagement throughout the project, so that is certainly something that we do as a state of our business, day in and day out at Austin Water. And so we would not discontinue that. But for the technical advisory piece, it's certainly an important element.
Okay. I still don't understand. You're basically saying if we don't sign this, that we don't get a seat at the table. And I'm saying if you want to sway public opinion, you need to have us at the table. So I will not be in favor of this at this point, just letting you know. And I, it kind of rubs me wrong that you're saying if you don't sign it, we don't get any, we don't get a seat at the table.
So again, just to be very clear, this is about the Technical Advisory Group that is evaluating the testing methods and procedures and how the lab analysis will be done and sharing that with that group as we go along that multi-year study. We will certainly be communicating out publicly those test results.
So in effect, we don't need the memorandum?
That has been what we've put forward to show that we can be a trusted partner in this. So do we legally need one? There's no permit requirement to have an agreement for this sort of thing, but we want to continue our partnership as we have with Bastrop County.
I appreciate it. I'm not putting you on the spot. I represent a lot of people, and I need to make sure that I represent the feedback I've been given.
Understood, and I agree.
I have a few questions about the document in particular. And I guess I heard the mayor and another council member say that you are not requiring us to support the project after the testing phase. Is that true?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
That just doesn't line up with what this document actually says?
Okay.
And I appreciate the city attorney to follow along with this, just to make sure I'm reading this right. But looking at the MOU, number five, Section D, and going to bullet Romanimal III, if the project proceeds to Phase 1B field testing, stakeholders will make a recommendation about the future of the project after completion of Phase 1B field testing. It's not shall, it's not softer language. So from my understanding, for the city attorney, by agreeing to this, we are obligating ourselves to support this project?
Our attorneys have interpreted that differently. Rather than interpreting recommendation to mean a, an indication of support for the project, we're interpreting that to mean a recommendation about any, any sort of pathway that the future of the project could follow. So a recommendation to Austin City Council about the future of the project.
I think that is how I'm interpreting as well. Like y'all could come back and say, we don't really agree with, we don't think it's viable anymore, so... But it seems whatever decision y'all come back to, this contract is saying we will need to agree with that.
That is not our intention. No, this, the, within this document, we have stated that the stakeholders will make a recommendation related to the project, the ASR Technical Advisory Group will make a recommendation about the future of the project, and Austin Water will make a recommendation about the future of the project. That is, if you look and... in section five, Roman numeral, well, section five B, and then Roman numeral three, it says the science-based recommendations from the ASR technical advisory group, Austin Water's project recommendations, and the recommendations from partners and stakeholders will be provided by Austin Water in a report to Austin City Council members, as has been requested by Bastrop County stakeholders. So those are three sets of recommendations, which may be different.
I think I'm following that. I guess it's, and I'd love to hear from the city attorney. I don't know if you need a microphone or?
He does. No, you need him. We have people online that are watching, so you got to come to.
So the way I'm reading it is very similar to how they're reading it. Recommendation doesn't mean approval or support of the project. It just means you're making a recommendation to go forward one way or another.
And it needs to align with their recommend, or their direction?
Not how I'm reading it.
And is there any NDA in place? I believe I see it under four E.
There was an NDA provided to all of the stakeholders that have been involved in our meetings. To date, none have been signed, but it is available for signature.
And we will need to?
And that NDA, just to clarify, the NDA is specific to the desktop study that was performed to identify potential feasible locations for the next phase of field testing. We've already provided to the stakeholder group those reports from that desktop analysis. What has been redacted from those reports are, let's say, nine to 10 maps that show spatial data indicating kind of more feasible areas for an ASR project. That is what the NDA is related to, is a version of that report document that has the unredacted maps. The end, there is no NDA related to the content of the Phase 1B field testing or the results of the field testing. I know that's been confusing.
As the representative that will be on the board, if we sign this MOU, I will be the one that will be under the NDA.
But only for 1A.
Well, only for 1A to see where they're going to be going in the maps and things like that. That is correct.
In this language for the attorney as well, too, back to the item above it, benefits and impacts, I just want to make sure that if we start to believe that this project is not beneficial for our community, are we going to be able to speak negatively about this project? I understand that there's a desire to ensure that it is fact-based, but I just want to make sure that we're not being able to advocate that this project does not go forward at any point.
The way I'm reading it is you can make any recommendation you want. It's not, doesn't have to be in support. You don't have to support this project. It's a field testing comes back in a way that the city doesn't support it.
Do we have to draw up another document that we do not support it, or this one just goes forward at the, is that, will another document have to appear if we do not support this?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
How many other stakeholders have not voted to enter into this memorandum of understanding? Any other towns?
So far, the governing bodies that have considered the agreement, they have voted to approve it. Still underway, city, city of Bastrop is receiving a presentation tonight. And then Lost Pines Groundwater District is considering this agreement tomorrow. And then I believe Bastrop County, I'm trying to make sure my dates are correct in my head, I believe is October 27th at their next commissioner's meeting. Yes. Aqua Water Supply Corporation has, has approved the agreement as well as SODIF, which is Simsboro Aquifer Water Defense Fund.
Yeah. And, and the other thing you should know, besides this ASR, there's another ASR that's already around Lake Bastrop that's been in litigation for some time, if I know about. That's from LCR A. And there are other people that will be doing ASRs. This is not anything new. This has been approved by the state to happen. ASR has happened since 1995. This is part of an ongoing thing that has happened across the state. I know it is controversial as all get out. People get all mad when you talk about their water. But if it's a way for us to continue to move forward so we do have water as a collective state, it's something to consider.
I think you said the operative word litigation there.
That litigation is under something completely different. That's with them and the, and that, and that happened at a different time, a long time ago, and not under these conditions.
I think for me, where I am, and ironically during the workshops that happened here in Smithville, this was a question I posed is, would this project potentially have any effect on any of the wells and would it kind of flush out a little bit? And my biggest concern was actually Ship's Lake and how would it affect that? And the fact that it is completely dry right now is kind of telling of how sensitive it is because it is artisanal well-fed. I think this is a very careful thing right now.
And I think it is too. After talking to Andrew at the Lost Pines Conservation District and Elvis and a few others, our, our aquifer is very slow to recharge. So it, it does not rise like it should. If the, if this happens, one of the things of benefit, because it would be pumping their water in, it would cause the level of our aquifer to rise some because that could be something that could happen local. Am I correct in that? That is one of the things I have talked about is that brings out local water for farmers that if their wells have gone dry, that might bring them back up into having water.
Ironically, and, and I don't think this is the time for this debate, but this is why I'm going to be voting no on this is because I've heard the exact opposite. And that is what is concerning is I'm at, and this is with all due respect, and this is where I think constructive criticism on this is being given right now, is in that meeting, I heard three different things from four different people, and that is really concerning to me.
Kathy?
I have some of the same concerns about the aquifer and how this water would be stored. I'm still unclear on what that actually involves in terms of storing the water there. And can you explain a little bit more about that and what that, the physicality of that?
Sure. So the way that this project would work, I'm just going to kind of take a step back to describe the whole configuration of the project, is that we would take water from Austin's existing water supplies to the Colorado River and the Highland Lakes. We have access to up to 325,000 acre feet per year, and we use about 175,000 acre feet per year. So in years of plenty, we would be able to take water from our water supplies, treat it at our existing drinking water treatment plants to drinking water standards, and then we would convey that water via a transmission main to a well field. The water would then undergo some additional treatment to make sure that it is compatible with the native groundwater and the sediments and sands within the aquifer. Then the water would be pumped underground, and that water would be pumped underground at a rate that's determined to be able to not cause any damage to the structures of the aquifer. So we'd have to do that slowly enough so that that water can form what is commonly called a bubble. That water is then stored in small pore spaces in between the sands and, and rocks that are within the aquifer. That water displaces the native groundwater. So the native groundwater moves outward and to some extent upwards as Commissioner, or Member Tim Jenkins had mentioned. That water around the edges, the stored water will mix to some extent with the native groundwater, creating a buffer area. That water will be stored until it's needed during times of drought or other situations where that water would then be pumped up from the same wells that pumped the water underground. The water that is pumped from those wells would then undergo some additional level of treatment to be compatible with the drinking water within our distribution system and then served to our customers as potable drinking water.
How are you planning to determine the sites where you inject the water?
That is part of what this field testing is intended to identify is where are feasible locations for a potential ASR project, as well as if we can maintain appropriate water quality between the city of Austin's drinking water and the native groundwater and aquifer sediments. A key part of this is protecting the health of the aquifer. And so we have to see, can we identify treatment processes to make those water qualities compatible and not do any harm to the aquifer while protecting that, that drinking water. The field testing will help us to determine if areas within Bastrop County that we've identified, kind of several miles south of Page, is a feasible location for this project to potentially move forward into the next phase of pilot testing. And if not, then we would have the data and information to know that, that we shouldn't move forward with the project.
And the, and the timeline again, please?
Yes. So the next step would be three years of field testing. And I should note that we're going to be performing that field test. The idea is that we would be performing that field testing here in Bastrop County, like I mentioned, several miles south of Page. An exact location hasn't been determined because we have not started that phase yet and we need to identify a willing landowner who would be willing to allow us to drill two wells on their property. I should also mention too, those two wells, we've agreed with Lost Pines, would be converted to permanent monitoring wells. So those wells would be drilled at the city of Austin's cost. And then they would be able to be accessed by Lost Pines in perpetuity. And if this project didn't continue, then we would transfer ownership of those wells or access to those wells for Lost Pines to be able to use them as monitoring wells to monitor both aquifer water level and water quality. So that field testing phase would be three years long. At the end of that phase, the technical advisory group, stakeholders and Austin Water would make recommendations on whether and how the project should move forward to Austin City Council. And Austin City Council is the entity that's responsible for allocating funding for, for this project. So they would make a decision on whether or not the project should move forward to pilot testing. If the project were to move forward to pilot testing, that would entail 36 to 42 months more of piloting via a small-scale ASR well, where we would test the treatment and then pumping the small amounts of water into the aquifer, as well as withdrawing that same water to be able to test our assumptions about how a full-scale ASR project would work. Overall, field testing and piloting is estimated to take at least six years.
I think a question I've had along the way is, we have great water here in Smithville. So would one of our guys from our water department be allowed to draw water and test it through our city energy? Or is it only going to be people you have show up? And then can each person, like Bastrop has their water district, we have our water? Or is that going to be a, is that going to be something that our people from Smithville can draw our, our samples that we get the information firsthand, not secondhand?
Yeah. I mean, I, we haven't considered that or talked about that in, in any detail. And I think that would be something for the technical advisory group to work through the testing methodologies. So I, what I would say is yes, I think we're open to that and let the technical advisory group weigh in. And it would make sense to me that that individual might be a part of that advisory group alongside Mayor Pro Tim Jenkins or whoever is assigned from the city of Smithville.
I would rather someone that we trust with our water here and an outside view, that we are not having to digest what you're giving to us, that we are drawing from the well in a sense.
Mayor, I, oh.
No, I was just going to continue. This really doesn't sit well with me. I mean, what we're, what I'm reading here and what I'm hearing is if we don't approve this memorandum, then we will not have access to information. Any information y'all have, you need to make it readily available to the public. You don't need to make us sign a memorandum on this, and you don't need to deny us a seat at the table, particularly when you need to sell us on this. And I'm prepared to make a negative motion right now.
Right, I understand. And, and just to make sure that I'm articulating this correctly, we will continue throughout the field testing, which is, you know, the water testing in a laboratory. Those results would be made available to the public, to all of Bastrop County, to Austin community, et cetera. The seat at the table would be for the technical advisory committee and sitting at that, in that role.
But that information would still be made available to the public. So then why do we need the memorandum?
To participate in the technical.
So what you won't let us participate in the conversation is one of the primary stakeholders. I think you need us for this. So you're telling us you won't let us sit at the table if we don't sign this on the technical. I don't care if it's technical or whatever. I mean, this is heavy-handed to me.
Okay.
I feel like my question for you, mayor, is a little complicated because we haven't officially brought the interim city manager. Well, I, I think we have a motion here of, of formally acting for him to be these.
Item 15.
Yeah. So my question is, does he have any questions? And am I allowed to ask that? Because we haven't done item 15 yet.
He's had a very eventful day on his first day here. We do not want to run him off. What are you suggesting, suggesting? What gains?
I think that without putting you on the spot and without you really knowing anything about this, are there any things that, any questions you may have as we're discussing? Because I was not on the dais whenever they came up the last time. I got sworn in that same meeting and wasn't allowed to speak about it. So I'm kind of catching up and I just want to make sure that you're not in the same position.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Fraser, new interim city manager, soon to be, still semi-training wells. At this point, to answer your question, I would say that at this point, I don't have any questions. I've, I've digested some of the material, but I've spent all of one day with this item and 32 other items. And so I don't feel confident at this point to give you a accurate answer as to whether or not I would make a recommendation either way.
No, absolutely not, not asking you that. I just want to make sure you didn't have any questions you wanted to ask.
I, I am jotting down a few questions that I would hope to be able to discuss afterwards. Thank you.
Well, I think the memorandum, if I'm reading this right from y'all, y'all have a timeline where you're getting to all the cities right now because you have to bring this back to the city of Austin approval to move forward. If that is correct. Okay. So that has to be done by what, November?
November 20th is the city of Austin council date.
We could table this till the next meeting.
Yeah. So is, we can table this right now and do this at our next meeting when we have a little more talk and information about it. I would like to, some of the things that were addressed, maybe we can talk about those. I'll get with you both and see if we can't talk about those things.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Before we move to table, I just want to make it clear, I'm prepared and I, I'll, I'll go with the table because, but I was prepared to move that we do not approve this. So there's going to be a lot of selling that needs to be done and take back the feedback that this is too heavy-handed and. is too heavy-handed and what honestly, I was offended by.
I agree completely, and I think where I have heard, and I, I'm not one to just, just negatively talk about something like that, and I, I think, but it really hasn't set well with me, the discussions that I had with individuals at the last workshop, where I was told something, I asked the same questions to each person, and all three answers came back, or the four answers, three of them came back separate, and they were all different. I got one Jimmy said, I got one that y'all said tonight, and I got a third as well, too, that was kind of in between. I think that the messaging needs to be cleaned up and needs to be better presented and definitively presented, and if that's what's happening tonight, but I think that it needs to be consistent for me to feel comfortable. But Mayor, I make a motion that we table this today until the next regular call at city council meeting.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Are you good, Jennifer? Thank you, guys. All right, guys. Now we're going to jump to item number twenty-six. Discussion and action on a petition to establish enclave at Riverbend Public Improvement District. I don't know who, I know we have a whole gang of people here, so if y'all all want to come up together, introduce yourself. Welcome, Mr. McCullough, good to see your face again.
Been a while.
Been a minute.
Welcome back to Smithville. Patrick with Bond Counsel.
Smithville.
Dear Bount, I think we need to give everybody a mic.
I can hear who y'all were.
Sure.
Tom, are you part of this, Tom, are you part of this group? No? Okay, I didn't know if you need to come up too.
I'll just introduce myself and then step away. So my name is Stephanie Libby. I'm an attorney with Norton Rose Fulbright. Our firm serves as bond counsel to the city of Bastrop. So we're here to answer any ques, oh, sorry, Smithville. We're here to answer any questions that you may have about the petition, the resolution, and how it interrelates with the PID policy.
I'm sorry, who do you represent?
I represent city of Smithville.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Jeremy, you're blinking your eyes a lot.
My name is Patrick Born, I work with. Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
My name is Patrick Born, I work with Sundance Analytics. I'm a PID consultant for the developer.
Todd McCullough with Smithville Land Partners, I'm the developer, here with my team Bethany and Nick as well, Bethany Ross and Nick Green. We're, we're back again, it's been a little bit. Project's been just a status update, there's really not much of one, it's really kind of been on hold or standby, as we're trying to continue to work out the kinks, but you know, in the interim, as you know, the real estate market's been a little soft, so it's making some of the builders nervous right now, and costs continue to go up. And this is, this has been a plan, in the plan for us for quite some time, so we're here tonight to, to request acceptance of our PID petition and our service agreement as well. That's item twenty-seven. We, we did have a quick presentation, you've already seen that presentation, we can make it again to review the project, if any of you need to review the project, or if you're familiar with it, we can just jump straight into, straight into the PID.
I think I would like a review.
Okay.
So we have a young gentleman that's coming aboard, that he can hear all the different angles of this project, because there are a lot to absorb here, so.
Very good.
Say, if you don't mind, starting kind of from the beginning, just catch us all up to speed, that would be great. Y'all go with that?
Very good.
Okay.
And we have another review up here, and I'll, I'll go, I'm sorry. Good.
Do you need a mic in case you have questions?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll review the project real quick, and then when it comes time to really get into the PID details, I'll turn that, turn the time over to Patrick Born. We've got here our thirty-five acre development, the enclave at Riverbend, the corner of seventy-one and American Legion Road. It's a hundred and fourteen residential lots. We, we do have unapproved plat, and so we're, and really, we can go pull a permit and start construction anytime, generally speaking. So we're, we're excited about the project, we do have a builder under contract right now, and so we're just trying to, to continue to work out the kinks and get us in a position where we can start this. We know it's been, we've been working on this for quite some time with your team and with your staff and, and with many of you, and we appreciate everything that you've done up to this point, and we're, we're excited about it. We're hoping that the market gets a little better, too, to help us all, but like I said, the challenges have been that the market's gotten a little soft, rates continue to, to stay up there a little bit, and, and then costs continue to, to go up. So we're working through those things with our builder and with, with, with ourselves, again, trying to get in a position that, that we can, we can deliver this to the city of Smithville. And so that's one of the reasons that we're here tonight, is to talk to you about PID and, and how that can help us and help you and help us all get, get it done quicker and get a nicer subdivision, because that's really what, that's one of the things that I really wanted to do, as well as to deliver the city of Smithville the best product that I can deliver. Could you go, Jennifer? It really, you know, it's, it's a, just a quick anticipated product is what we're looking at. We're trying to be, starting in the low three hundreds is where we're trying to be, and so far, that's looking like that's where we want to be. I know our builder wants to actually start lower than that, but that's, that's kind of where we're, where we've projected and where we're, where we've underwritten the deal. Product, generally speaking, is going to be thirty-five to forty-five, forty-foot wide homes, and the lots are fifty-foot wide. I think we've been over, you know, a lot about the actual plat, and some of the lots will require thirty, a little bit skinnier homes, and some of the lots will be able to, to put the wider lots on there. Thanks, Jennifer. Again, talking about the PID, and I, I know that your team has done a great job of, of getting y'all up to speed on the PID and, and giving you all the benefits of what a PID provides, but just some of, some of the ones that, that you recall, and I, I want to point out just really kind of a couple of them, especially with, I think, where you're at with the city right now, the increased tax revenues will, will be helpful, and I know that, that regardless of whether we do a PID or not, you're going to get increased revenues, but if we do a nicer subdivision, it's going to attract the home value, you're going to be higher, and that's going to increase your tax revenues over time. And then I also want to point out that I think just getting this on the ground sooner is going to help economic growth for the, for the city of Smithville, and I know that's what we're all looking for, the right type of growth, and, and, you know, having rooftops helps, helps generate retail, which helps generate rooftops, which kind of helps the city move forward and drive things forward, especially from, from expanding the tax base and being able to provide the, the services that, that the citizens here need and deserve. Really, that's, that's really all I had to say about the subdivision itself. I'll turn the time over to Patrick to talk about the PID, but before I turn that time over to him, do you have any questions for me as far as the status of the, of the subdivision itself?
Todd, Mr. McCullough, if I'm.
Sure, you bet.
We've come to know each other over the last few years.
Yes, absolutely.
A question, if the target price point or entry level on the project is three hundred thousand, does that include the impact of the PID fee itself? Because that's, that's quite an additional impact, I was going to say burden, on the new homeowner.
Yeah.
You're going to be able to achieve three hundred with?
That's what we're shooting for, yes. Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, council member, we're, we're going to do everything that we can in our power, but at the, at the end of the day, when, when those home builders put the homes up, they're the ones that really are, are the ones that are going to drive most of that.
Hi, Todd.
Hi.
What do you mean by elevated building product? What's different?
I, I mean, really, where we're at right now, and, and as far as the costs are concerned, et cetera, what we'd be deliver, what we'd be able to deliver right now is a pretty vanilla subdivision, to be frank. Minimal, minimal monumentation, minimal landscaping, minimal improvements in the green space, and so that's going to attract a certain level of house, really. When you, when you upgrade the subdivision itself, you, you, you make the monumentation nicer at the front, you make the landscaping nicer, you put in more trees, you maybe make the sidewalks a little bit bigger. Now you put playscapes and, and soccer fields and that type of stuff, it's going to attract a nicer product, and that's going to elevate, elevate the, the values which increase the tax revenue.
Okay, so it's the other amenities in addition to the actual physical structure that.
Correct.
You see as an elevated product. Okay, thank you.
Are those generic examples? Because I'm struggling to see where a soccer field would fit.
Oh, you're talking about in, in the actual.
Yeah, this, this.
Plat itself.
Talking.
We've got a lot of green space back on the backside.
Is that all primarily?
It, it's not going to be all used for detention, there'll be actually some greens. There's a little bit of green space throughout where the houses are, we've got a big, big, pretty big chunk of green space back there that, that won't be used for detention, but even so, it's earth and detention, and so it's the type of thing that you could put a soccer field down in there, and, you know, if it rains and it's going to get this much water in it for a few days, and then it's going to be gone. So it, it could conceivably also be used as a soccer field.
I know whenever this came about, right before I, as far as the PID policy came about, right before I was sworn in, it actually, the first media I had is where it got approved, and, and I know that this is very recent, it was, had peer analysis as well, too, as far as comparison to other communities around us and throughout the state. Some of the things that I, and, and I spoke about at the meeting prior as well, whenever I could, my question is, is how does this amount to extraordinary? And that is, the, the language that is used throughout the PID policy is an extraordinary benefit, and, and the requirement there is that that is met for us to have this discussion about the PID. And so I, I want to understand, from your perspective, why would it be extraordinary other than just adding a hundred homes to our community?
And I, I really appreciate you bringing that question up, because actually, I needed to, to also say that we're, we are going to be asking for some exceptions to your PID policy. It's just, it's just going to be necessary for us to be able to do it. PID, the PID policy that you've adopted, you know, is, is, is great, there are some challenges to it, to be frank, and so we, we need, we, we just need some, some consideration to overcome some of those challenges that your PID policy presents to developers. And I, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that they're there. And, and one of those is defining extraordinary. That's a very, very general subjective word, but generally, what I was saying, how I was answering council member Mike's question is, instead of a plain vanilla subdivision, we're going to up that subdivision, where it's going to be something that we're all going to like a lot more, a lot, a lot more, a lot more amenities, and, and it's going to look a lot nicer. So that, that's, that's how I would define extraordinary in this, in this instance.
If my, if I may interject on that, I'm looking at the PID policy, it's on page five, Roman numeral three, prioritization, be extraordinary benefits, and it's defined there as the development provides extraordinary public benefits that advances the vision and goals of the city's comprehensive plan or other planning documents, such as the extension, financial contribution, or enhancement of infrastructure, diversity of housing, and enhanced parks, trails, open space, and recreational amenities that are available to the public. So we, we did, I know that's subject to some subjective interpretation, but we spent a lot of time putting the PID together, and we are aware that it is somewhat more restrictive than others, but this is, this wasn't done because of the possibility of you coming with a PID, this was for us because we had to have a policy.
Sure.
And, you know, I'm amenable to considering some of these things, I don't know why we needed to have eight, it kind of questions how well we prepare the document itself, but since we got into this, number two, the, the exception that you're asking for, the PID policy section, community benefit fee, and you're asking for a waiver of that, and when you look at the definition of the community benefit fee that we've got, it says that the developer must pay the city a fee based on either ten percent of the net proceeds to be generated from the issuance of PID bonds, or if the PID bonds are not issued, three thousand four hundred dollars per single-family dwelling. So what, what is the ten percent of the net proceeds number? And that may be one of your consultants that can give me that number. It says ten percent of the net proceeds to be generated from the issuance of PID bonds.
Yeah, based, that, that number will be determined at the time that bond proceeds or that bonds get issued, but based on preliminary estimates, we're looking at nearly two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars would be that fee.
Two hundred and sixty-eight?
Uh huh.
And then the alternative would be three thousand four hundred, which I think generates two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred, three hundred and eighty-six thousand. So one way or another, there's a community benefit fee at a minimum, let's say, of a quarter of a million dollars.
Thank you for not making me do that math in my head.
I did it prior to the meeting.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Now, so what I'm getting at is, the community benefit fee is in the, in our PID policy for a reason, and now it's, we're being asked to waive that, and I haven't seen an extraordinary benefit demonstrated yet, so that's what I'm saying to you, is show us extraordinary benefit.
Yeah, no, I, I think one of the things that, as we go through this, and we, we aren't there yet in our presentation, but we were getting there, is the amount of property tax revenues that this project generates. We're looking at this project generating about two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars annually at build-out to the city. That's just in city property tax revenues that we're looking at. Right now, the city generates on that piece of property, and let me just pull down my numbers here, about thirty-five dollars a year, okay? So when we look at extraordinary benefit, one of the things that the PID provides is the ability to bring the project in itself, okay? Without the PID, and I look at that project, the development itself, as an extraordinary benefit over a vacant field or a vacant lot, right? One of the key things about a public improvement district is it provides the ability to pay for public infrastructure at a lower financing cost. That's kind of the key purpose of this. In being able to utilize lower infrastructure costs, we can bring in the type of development that the developer is trying to bring in here. He says, like a vanilla development might come in, right? That's if we're able to even be able to finance the public infrastructure that's required to do that and be able to keep the home prices at a level that will attract home buyers. We can't build if we can't meet the home, the home prices that the home buyers need. And so we're looking for a public improvement district to bring down those costs, generate revenues for the city, create rooftops for the city, that will ultimately bring in more commercial, because commercial is looking for rooftops. That's what we're trying to bring to the city, is a quality development. If we're tacking on additional benefit fees, that further impacts or reduces the ability to try to bring that enhanced development that we're trying to bring to the city, even at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Three hundred and eighty-six.
Thank you. That, that's still a lot of money, that, that impacts that ability and offsets the impact, the, the benefit of the PID in us being able to put in the infrastructure that is required to bring this type of project to the city.
But you're, you're asking us to waive the community benefit fee, and you're saying in doing so, you're providing us, you're saying that the extraordinary benefit is, is generating property tax revenue for us that we don't currently have. These, this land is already zoned SF1, so at some point. So at some point when this land gets developed, we're going to get property tax revenue from it.
At, at some point.
Right.
And right now it still hasn't. And so in, in bringing this development that accelerates those revenues to the city. I, I did take, do a little bit of math before I, I came to this meeting. And that 218,000 dollars is about 12% of the city's current budgeted O and M property tax revenues. You probably saw that in the presentation. I, I showed that previously. And that's O and M and maybe you could say, oh, debt service, that, that's what I had in, in the numbers that I was showing there, right? What we're trying to do is accelerate and bring those property tax revenues to the city. And you're right, it, it might come in the future. None of us know if or when that will come. We're trying to accelerate those revenues to the city as quickly as we can.
So you're offering that the acceleration is the extraordinary benefit?
That is part of it, yes. In, in addition to the type of community that he would like to bring to the city and that we're, we're hoping meets the expectations and the desire of the city as well and the type of development that you're looking for.
Are there firm commitments that the developer or any of the parties are willing to make as far as delivery, as far as um, community benefits that will be included? Such as street trees, wider sidewalks? I mean, these are all things that have been discussed. But how do we know that we will get something that is going to be extraordinary?
No, that, that's a great question. And that comes, we, we, it's hard to commit to those if there's no pit in place, right? I, if we don't know. So this would go into a development agreement that is reviewed by city manager, approved by council, reviewed by the city's attorney, city staff, to make sure that the language is in there that makes the council and the city comfortable that you're getting those benefits that he's talking about today and that will ultimately be required. That would be in that development agreement.
I think with that in mind, um, I don't know how familiar you are, keep up with local stuff. But um, from what I'm understanding, there is a pedestrian bridge that is being approved or has been approved and is going through funding with text dot that is going to go to connect Colorado Drive to Riverbend Park next to 71. It's going to be on the south side of the highway, close to where the enclave is, close to the Herda Estates. It seems like it's starting to become a launching point for a hike and bike trail that can fully circle the city. I'm curious if there would be any sort of desire to help the city be able to see that start to come to fruition with your project and being able to connect at least American Legion to this bridge. Um, things like that, I think would help to start, move us in the direction of it being extraordinary.
That would be an extraordinary benefit.
It's on the south side.
It's on the south side.
The south side is where.
I, I, I would have to defer to the developer on that. I think we'd also need to look at, uh, at, at that again. A, as we're looking in the development agreement for those benefits needed by the city, I think that's definitely something that we can look at, but I would have to defer to the developer.
Those, those are the type of things that we would sit down and talk about um, when we're, when we're going through that development agreement. I mean, what, what are the benefits cities? They, they need to be able to be qualified for the pit. But um, we'd be looking to try to do things that the city desires. No doubt about it. But yeah, I'm glad that, that Patrick brought that up, that we, that's, that's what that development agreement is for. Is that it protects the city as well. That if I don't perform what I'm supposed to do, then you don't, you're no obliga, no obligation to perform what you're supposed to do.
And this, I guess some background that I would like questioned is maybe something Robert would be able to add some color to. But from my understanding, this was originally annexed in and there was a 380 agreement. But that 380 agreement is now dead because of the duration? Has it expired?
The 3D agreement is not expired at this time, but there are portions of the performance-based metrics that have been missed. So the agreement, I believe, two years ago, we did an extension due to COVID and commodity issues. And I think it's 2028, that it's good, good through. But the milestones have pretty much all been missed. So the thought was that they were going to take the good, bad, and the ugly from the 380 and what you want for extraordinary measures and meld it into a development agreement that meets both parties' interests.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the milestones that have been missed that Robert's referring to or that Mr. Temple's referring to is that we, we, we were supposed to be delivered, have, have delivered lots and finished homes by this time and just that it, we haven't been able to do so.
And when does this development agreement occur? What is the timeline or what, what is the process for that happening?
That, that's a Patrick question. But this, all this, this process that we're going through is all dictated by the Attorney General's Office of the state of Texas. So this is not stuff that we're coming up with. That this, getting our pit petition accepted by you is the first step that we all have to do. And then, and then you create the pit. And again, I'm just kind of speaking out of turn, Patrick can probably. But then after that pit is created, then we go into the development agreement and, and all that starts going. Now, just because the pit is created doesn't mean that it, it, you know, there's still a lot of work after the pit's created to make, to make it where it actually is functional.
And, and I hope y'all understand, I mean, we're, although some people argue you don't set precedent and every situation is always judged on its uniqueness, it tends to set precedent. So we've got to be very careful in how we approach this. I appreciate you letting us get to the meat of this instead of going through the, not that you won't be going through presentations, but you know, this is certainly a great opportunity for us to, to get into some of the more meaty issues that I think might be, we have to resolve them. We as a council, I speak for myself.
Certainly. I certainly, certainly very open to, to, to meeting the needs of the city.
I know Kathy had a question that may need to be asked, answered by him. But um, as we're I, I don't know who's going to answer this, so I'm going to ask before that happens. The amenities, are they going to be bound by HOA or are they for the entire city to, to utilize?
That's a, that's a question, that's, that's a Patrick question.
I think that'll depend on the type of amenities. But if we're looking at parks, open space, trail, traditionally those are open to the public. Particularly, they, they would have to be if we fund any of those through the pit because they would have to be public infrastructure in order to even be eligible. We wouldn't be able to gate those off or anything like that.
Patrick, while you're there, jumping down to item four under uh, asking for a reduction in the value to lien ratio. Can you explain, is this your question? Am I talking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, I'd be
I just want to make sure. For the, for the edification of, of us on council and those in the audience and, and the folks that are listening, watching online, can you explain what impact that this does? Why is this a benefit to you? I mean, is it effectively, does it lower the borrowing cost? Where you can borrow more money or just at a, at a lower interest rate, which allows you to do more stuff, more investment into the project itself? So what's the net, why do you need us to reduce this ratio?
No, great question. Do you want me to quickly explain to the group what, what that a value to lien ratio even is?
Yes.
Okay, just so that we're not, I'm not given reasons and you're like, I don't even know what he's talking about. Okay, so before a pit bond is issued, there's an, there's an appraisal done of the property. And what we're requesting here is that appraised value be one and a half times greater than the amount of the pit bond itself, okay? The pit policy right now states that it needs to be two and a half times, that the appraised value needs to be two and a half times greater than the bond amount. Give me a second here. Sorry, I, I, I had, I had a sneeze coming and it just stopped, okay? I didn't want to sneeze all over your microphone. Sorry about that. It, it might jump back on me, but uh, I'll, I'll pull away if it does, okay? So sorry about that. No, it just, it just, you're perfect.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're doing, what we're doing is we're requesting that it be at a one and a half to one. What this allows the developer to do is issue this as a single series of bonds. As opposed to issue a series of bond and have what they call a trailing reimbursement. Meaning that because of the two and a half to one value to lien constraint, we would have to issue a smaller amount of bonds. There would then be a remaining portion of the par amount that we would not be allowed to issue. And then we would come back to council at a later date to get that reimbursed, okay? Or do some smaller bond issue. So what it does, it creates for a more efficient bond issue process. Now, at the time that, at two and a half to one, the industry standard, because as we're looking at these value to lien ratios, who's really driving this are the bondholders. When they purchase the bonds, their only source of collateral for that is the land within the district. So they want to make sure that that land is worth more than the amount of the bond. So in the event there's ever a default, right? They can foreclose on the property, just like any property taxes. What we've seen throughout Texas is that the bondholders are very comfortable at a one and a half to one value to lien ratio. There have been many bonds sold throughout the state of Texas at a one and a half to one and even less than a one and a half to one value to lien ratio throughout the state. And so we're requesting that one and a half to one so that we can do this as a single bond issue without having to come back to the city for some future trailing small reimbursement. The other thing that I wanted to point out there because we want to make sure that the city is not looking at this as a, as an increased risk. Okay, when we initially came to this city, we were talking about issuing what they call construction bonds. Issuing bonds at the very beginning of the project and using those bond proceeds as part of our construction financing, right? Part of our capital stack. As we've come back with this, what we're requesting is to do this as a reimbursement bond issue. Which means that all of the infrastructure, all of the public infrastructure for the project will already be in place. And so the city's not having to issue the bonds and the bondholders are, are taking a risk that that infrastructure is already completed. That infrastructure will already be in place. And so that, that's why we're requesting the one and a half to one versus the two and a half to one. And that's kind of the, the pros cons there.
Can you relate that to, to actual numbers, to raw numbers that we've got? I mean, this is basically a $6 million bond, correct?
Give me just a second here. No, we're, we're looking at about a 3.3 million dollar bond.
So the 6 million is actually your capital contribution total? Up to, okay.
And, and when he says go up to, what we take a look at is we're required by state law to list the total estimated costs of the infrastructure in our pit petition. And so when we look at the, the cost of the infrastructure and the pit issuance costs, right? All of the infrastructure combined will be about 6 million. We don't anticipate that the pit will fund all of the infrastructure for this project.
Okay, so we're related to an estimated bond required.
Now, now I do have to pull out my calculator.
Thank you.
No problem. Let me see, I might have a cheat here. Give me just a second.
Isn't this so much better than going through a presentation?
I know, so much more fun.
Let me help for a minute while he does his math. So Stephanie Lieby, um, one of the things that we've done when we were reviewing the city's pit policy and the deviations from the policy the developer is requesting, we built into the resolution tonight that acceptance of the petition and even creation of the pit itself does not evidence the city's consent to those deviations. A lot of the questions that are being asked will evolve in real time as we negotiate the development documents, the development agreement, if there's a financing agreement. All of these questions that council is asking are very good questions, but they're questions that our firm as bond counsel, Sam Coe, as the city's financial advisor, and then also the pit administrator that the city hires to administer the pit, will work with the development team on. And so the actions that you all take in relation to the creation of the pit, we call these preliminary actions. Tonight, if you choose to move forward, we would accept the petition. We would call a public hearing related to the creation. So we'd come back at a future city council meeting date, have a public hearing regarding creation of the district. When our firm creates a public improvement district, we also require the developer submit a dissolution petition. So that if development doesn't occur within a specified time period, the city has the unilateral ability to go in and dissolve that pit. So we don't have a pit kind of floating, right? If development doesn't occur. City council is not required to take any additional or future actions in relation to a public improvement district until we get to a point in time in which you're actually levying assessments. When you levy an assessment and you place that assessment on the land, you've compelled yourself to a future action. And we will let you know when we get or if we get to that point in time. These actions that you all are taking right now would advance the public improvement district, but it says not compel the city to move forward with it.
I have a question on what you just said and, and want to understand how it's different from the sunset provisions they're asking to waive with the dissolution allowing it to disappear if they don't move forward. What is there between that and the sunset provisions?
I'm not 100% sure what the sunset provisions were, I guess, designed to do. State law doesn't actually allow for sunset provisions in relation to public improvement districts. And so there's, there's not a mechanism through which a pit could sunset. The way that you dissolve a pit is the same way in which you, under statute, the way you dissolve a pit is the same way that you create a pit. And that's through petitions submitted by the landowner. And so that's why in relation to our creation, when we have a developer create the pit, we require that they, in essence, escrow a dissolution petition with the ci, with the city so that we can meet that statutory requirement related to dissolution.
So I'll note, if we were to approve this petition tonight, then that commits us to a public hearing. I think we're prepared to announce that for the November meeting on November 10th. So I appreciate y'all entertaining these questions now because this is in preparation for what's going to happen on November 10th. And this package um has to be sold to the community. I mean, it, the feedback I get is 50/50. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speed up the process where we start enjoying the benefits of the increased property tax revenue and other things. So I just want to make sure that as we get into this discussion or negotiation about what extraordinary benefit really is and, and what you might be able to provide, I just want to make sure we're, we're protecting that ability to negotiate that.
I
Is that a confirmation?
Understood.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
No, because that, that honestly has been my biggest concern as well, too, is I'm not comfortable with these items in here as a currently state. And I don't think that, from my perspective, that the benchmark has been set for extraordinary. And I think that there's mechanisms tonight that have been laid out that I think, in my opinion, will get it across that mark. But I just want to make sure that we're not pigeonholing ourselves into something here. Frankly, the vanilla build can move forward. We all know that and we want to work with y'all to find a way to make this viable. But I don't think that if we approve this as it's sitting right now, the next developer is going to come in and say, look what you did for them. Look what you did for them. Look what you did for them. And this is the first real big development that we're seeing in the city. And I think it just would be premature to accept it as is. Well, understanding that we need to have flexibility with you guys and, and we need to help be a, a partner with y'all.
Sure. And, and again, I think from, from our perspective in relation to the pit policy, it wasn't clear to our firm, you know, how and when council would approve those deviations that had been requested. And so we specifically built language into tonight's resolution to state that acceptance of the petition did not constitute an approval of the requested deviations.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
I, I did want to just point out that this is why we're here tonight too is, and why we outlined. We wanted to get everything on the table so that there's no surprises for you. But we also don't want any surprises as well. So we want to know upfront, hey, if this is a nonstarter for you guys and you, you just can't live with it, we'd rather know tonight. Then, you know, we can go look at another direction. But, uh, so that's really why we're laying it all out on the table tonight. So we want to, want to kind of see if it's a nonstarter for you guys. And I think Patrick's point is well taken. That vanilla subdivision, you know, we, we don't know when and if that will even happen. I mean, we can't assume that if the Pid doesn't happen, that the vanilla subdivision is going forward anyway. Just to be frank.
Is the builder still D.R. Horton?
Builder's still D.R. Horton at this point, yes.
Thank you for allowing us to do this. And I appreciate you saying, you know, if this is a nonstarter, you need to know.
Sure.
And, and that's something, you know, uh, Mr. Dunham and I have been hogging the microphone here and I look forward to hearing what my other colleagues say here. There are some things in here that I, I really don't like. And, and that's why I'm talking about negotiating what extraordinary benefit might be. But waiving the, waiving the community benefit fee, that's tough for me, but that out front.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
I want everybody else to get up to give their two cents and I just couldn't help myself. Andrew Friedman with SAMCO Capital Markets serves as the city's financial advisor. To help differentiate all the various people you've had up here. Stephanie Lieby with Norton Rose Fulbright, your bond attorney. I'm your financial advisor. We have a fiduciary duty to you all, the city and the city council. We don't represent the developer, we don't work for the developer. We've worked closely with you all as you all were drafting and contemplating a Pid policy and considering this Pid. So I just wanted to offer some thoughts. Both Norton Rose Fulbright, SAMCO do a lot of Pids all over the state of Texas. So we see all number and sizes of public improvement districts. What the developer has proposed for you all and with the deviations from the policy they're requesting are very much on market. That's just a reality. Where you all may have borrowed different things from other cities' Pid policies that were drafted years ago are not applicable, in my professional opinion, to the market and how Pids are being done today. And I think that's important for you all to know as you go into being approached by other developers, by this developer, and what their requests are and what's reasonable. And so I can offer you my two cents, my opinion, my experience, what's out there. It's for you all to make a decision, to, to determine if this is really a project that you want. Not for me to determine, I'm not here to try to sell you on this development or any other development. But I do want to at least express, you know, my professional thoughts that the deviations that they're requesting, you don't see really community benefit fees being paid any longer. Now, five years ago, when interest rates were very low, construction costs were much lower before you had inflation that really reared its ugly head. Developers could use that as an incentive to get their development and a Pid created and a project done in a city. So you did have instances where that was the case. Since then, we've seen construction costs go up tremendously. You've seen interest rates go up. That all puts pressure and on the developer to accomplish that project for the home builder to sell their, their homes at a margin, uh, you know, that's still affordable. And so that's one example, the value to lien ratio where I think initially when we started that Pid policy discussion, the reference from other Pid policies was three to one. So that's, you just don't see that any longer as the, the mature, as the market has matured, we've seen that come down. Their one and a half to one is getting lower and certainly beyond that. We've used protections for the city where said, okay, we'll give you a one and a half to one or a two to one, whatever that request may be. But we're going to have what's called a holdback provision that says, we'll go and do the bond financing, but we're not going to release all of those funds to you until you've got enough homes on the ground that support that two and a half to one value to lien ratio. That's the waiver, you know, that they've drafted here in this memorandum for you.
Can I interrupt you on that? Just make sure I understood that better. So you are saying that the Pid will be issued based on one to five, 1.5 to one value. However, you won't release the funds until it gets to a 2.5 to one value.
Yep, the, the trustee won't release funds to the developer to reimburse them for the infrastructure they put in until they've got rooftops, homes that have been built, that have added value, that have brought that appraised value to that two and a half to one threshold.
So the effect is the appraised value is brought up because we actually have homes on the ground. And now you're able to meet the 2.5. I don't mean to oversimplify it.
It helps the developer to get those funds to help reimburse them. And it helps to protect the city that we've actually got the value on the ground to, to support that.
Thank you. I just don't want to, much less talk over our heads, but we, we, there's a lot of interest in this and we may have 10 or 12 people watching online, so.
Sure, no, absolutely.
Can, can you, excuse me? Am I hearing you say that the Pid that we developed and we did, we did, we did lots of research and we did take advantage of our, our fellow city council members and all in other parts of, of our area who willingly assisted us with that? Are you saying that some of this that we're seeing tonight is a result of development of a Pid policy that was already somewhat outdated in a way?
I will step on that hand grenade and say yes.
Okay, you just said it.
And that's, and I'm not here to place blame on anybody. One of the things that's happened is these Pids have, it's been like wildfire in the state of Texas. They've really taken off over the last few years. So if you're borrowing from a Pid policy that might have been adopted seven or eight years ago, some of the fundamentals that made the market up in 2014 or 2015, whenever that policy may have been adopted, simply don't apply to how the market has developed and matured, uh, these number of years later.
So we possibly were a little over conservative because we, this is our first rodeo with this. And, um, some of these things here may not have been included if we were more well versed in developing a Pid somewhat.
Conceivably. I bring all of that up because this won't be the first, this may be the first developer to approach you for this, but I don't want you all to be surprised when the next developer comes and points to all of the same issues over again.
No, it's very helpful and I appreciate you, your honesty, really do.
Yes, ma'am.
I think for me, just a question for fiduciary responsibility is, is there any pathway that this could come back and negatively affect the city? I, I understand like, say the, the deal falls through and say we have a unforeseen financial crisis that, that hits us next year that we never saw coming last time. And development market crashes, housing market crashes, there's going to be no home building again. Like I know home building is very slow right now, but if this project falls through, the bonds, before the bonds have been issued, what ends up happening in that pathway before the 2.5 to one ratio hits or other things like that?
If we haven't levied assessments yet, there is really no downside. Ms. Lieby already spoke to the dissolution petition that will have been included in that. So if development doesn't take place, the developer hasn't fulfilled their obligation, dissolve the Pid. And that land's no longer entitled. If we've gotten to a place where you have levied assessments for the infrastructure put in the ground and/or sold bonds, the risk that exists is what we refer to as headline risk. The city of Smithville taxpayers, rate payers aren't on the hook to either pay those assessments or make those bond payments in, in support of the bonds. The, the Pid goes into default, which has happened extremely infrequently, especially here in Texas. But that's the risk. It's not, there's no risk to, you know, a city of, of Smithville taxpayer that you all are going to have to adopt a higher ad valorem tax rate in order to help make those bond payments. It's simply not legally allowable to do that.
Is the, once assessments are made, that is before or after houses are built?
In this case, it'll be, I guess, conceivably before the homes are built, but somewhere within there.
And so I'm going to speak as if D.R. Horton is the builder. I think that is the likelihood, but we don't know a hundred percent. But would the builder or the developer be the responsible party for those, the payments of the, the assessments before they're sold?
Depends on where we are in the process when those assessments are levied. It'll be initially the developer and then as they sell those lots to the home builders, they will take on the responsibility of making those assessments. And then as those are sold to the homeowners who buy those homes, the assessment falls to them. The, the assessments run with the land. So whoever is in control and owns that land is responsible for those assessments.
I don't know if you're allowed to discuss this as far as when do you anticipate the sale of the lots to the builder versus, how long do you intend to hold them? Of course, there may be things you can't discuss.
Short as possible, but yeah.
I mean, are you looking to do phases of handover or?
If it were to be, if it were to be with this current contract, we would, we would have the, the lot sold in two years. All of them.
Mayor, may I ask a procedural question on, has this, and I'm, I'm trying to be respectful. We're, we're already at eight o'clock tonight and got quite a few meaty items. I, uh, they're not numbered. It's, it's after the drawing, it's the actual resolution. It's the actual resolution. Both item 26 and item 27 are included in this resolution. And so if we're moving, I, I'm sure there's a reason for that. Who drafted the resolution? They were in.
Sure.
Well, there's, there's 27 or in this one.
Yeah, 26 and 27 are both in this first one.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement. I think this is just a recital to show prior action by council. The, the first recital within that resolution is just a recital to show prior action by council to accept the petition. So that would be item 26. That resolution, there is resolution 27.
It's actually 27, okay. So it just acknowledges that 26 was passed.
That's right.
So if we get to the point where we pass 26, which is basically accepting the petition, we don't have to go to this 27.
No, we would go to the 27 if 26 is passed. If 26 is passed, if 26 is not passed, then we would not consider 27.
So if 26 is passing, we go to 27, that is actually entering into a professional services agreement.
Right. And a professional services agreement is an agreement between the city and developer whereby the developer agrees to deposit funds with the city to pay for city professional costs. My costs, Andrew's costs, newspaper publication costs, any costs that the city would incur in relation to professional services for the Pid. The developer is responsible for paying until we get to bond issuance and bond proceeds are available to pay those costs.
So the, the cap on the, the financial commitment from us by passing item 27 is the extent of the professional services costs that are in this exhibit at the back for like 65,000?
The costs in that agreement are paid by the developer. A Pid is intended to be revenue neutral, so there should be no city funds that are expended for those professional costs. They're funded by the developer until we get to bond issuance. Under the professional services agreement, we have an initial deposit and then the agreement is drafted such that when we draw down, and I think it's to $10,000, the developer is required to make an additional deposit so that there are always funds available to pay costs incurred by the city.
So in no way, shape or form are we approving this Pid at this point?
You are not approving the Pid at this point. You are accepting a petition that's been filed with the city secretary requesting that the Pid be created. We're calling a public hearing to have a public hearing to consider the question of whether or not council will create the.
And the professional services agreement is necessary to actually execute that resolutions.
Professionals, the professional services agreement is designed to protect the city so that as you move forward in this process, you're not incurring costs that you don't have funds to pay. We wouldn't ask the developer to enter into the professional services agreement and make the deposit unless there was an intent for council to move forward with the Pid. Developer is not going to want to deposit funds with the city to pay for professional costs if you reject his petition.
Is that clear as mud?
A little bit. Mayor, I, I have a question, maybe a procedural one. I think we may have messed up. We didn't ask citizen comments. Do we know on 26?
Okay.
I find that very surprising, but okay, cool.
So our council, are we, are, are we at, at the point where we want to, uh, you know, go 26?
I guess one more question before I agree to that.
Okay.
What liability are we exposing ourselves to right now as our bond counsel?
None.
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 And our city attorney. Do you have any concerns or anything at this point?
I really don't want to step on bond council's toes with advising on this, but I don't have any concerns with this Pid petition or the professional services agreement.
Ready? Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, establish a petition. Uh, we make a motion to, form a petition to establish Enclave at Riverbend Public Improvement District Pid.
I'll second.
A motion's been made and second, all in favor. All right, that one's approved and we're going to move to the number 27, Discussion and Action on a Public Improvement District Service Agreement. So they kind of go
They go hand in hand.
So go.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we, uh,
Comment?
Comments?
Any comments on 27? No?
Okay.
I didn't think we had. I thought we were clear on both. Okay, make a motion on a public improvement district service agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and second, all in favor. We all, and it is approved.
Okay.
Thank you for all the information. Um, I hope our interim city manager, I saw him writing a lot of notes over there, so welcome to Texas.
Thank you all again for your patience and clarification.
This is a lot of information and we just drew up our Pid agreement.
Yeah, okay.
So this blows my mind.
I'll just look at the last council for that one.
Do we need a bathroom break?
Yes.
I don't, I'm just asking if anybody out there. Okay, then we're going, okay. Okay, excellent.
Are we going back to how we're going?
I don't even know where I am.
Yeah, we decide where we are in the agenda.
Yeah, I think we're back.
I think we're on.
P and Z.
That was a little bit too much excitement there. All right, we're number seven. Here are recommendations for P and Z chairman and owner development.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. A little more P and Z excitement. Good morning, it's going to be good morning. Anyway, we met, um, last Tuesday for discussion and action on a variance request for an additional site design standard for Masonry Wall, uh, or other noise equivalent attenuating, uh, equivalent noise attenuating barrier for the legal description in Smithville Industrial Park. It's the part where the, uh, tractor supply is going to be going. And there was some discussion between the P and Z commissioners and their agent. And the builders agreed that because there is a residence next to this site, that they would install a double sided fence, possibly eight feet tall instead of six feet tall. And, um, that they would even not be opposed to moving it into their property by about 10 feet or so. The fact that the property line is literally Um, the fact that the property line is literally in between the trees and the shrubbery, they didn't wanna tear that down, which cause that's an additional noise attenuating um issue. They said they may wanna have it ten feet in because in case they could have their vehicles or some product might fall over the fence, they would be able to go back there and get it without it going onto the neighbor's property. Uh, there were no, no ni- excuse me, no neighbors to speak on this for or against it, it was approved unanimously. The second item was discussion and action on a zone change from S F two, single-family duplex district to M R mixed residential for four twenty-one Bunny Street. Um, this was also approved, this particular lot is half in city space and half in county space. They, they wanna put a manufactured home on the property to help take care of family members. Uh, there was, was a representative from Varvix there, but they did not speak publicly for or against it. They just said he liked the way we conducted our meeting. It was approved unanimously. Um, the third item was discussion and action on a zone change from C F community facilities to C three highway commercial for the piece of property that's between the railroad tracks where the church and those two white houses are. Uh, there was, they wanted to make that a commercial mall area type thing um in, in future. Um, there were no neighbors to speak for or against it, and it was also approved unanimously to change the zoning.
Do we have a map of that one? Is, is between?
It's where the two railroad tracks are, there's that white church and those two houses there.
So it's south of the church?
Yes, it's the, it's the housing, the church and the two house.
Okay.
It's, it's that whole area right now. It's, it's community facilities because of the church, but there's also two homes there. And he wants to make the whole thing commercial, a highway commercial.
So C three allows for that use?
You can have residential and commercial. You can't have commercial and residential. Right. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I did have.
Welcome.
A couple, a couple of simple questions. One, the fence, did you approve a six foot or an eight foot?
We approved in a six foot, but they would, they offered to do an eight foot if, if they wanted, if, if the council wanted to, I guess. It's just that, because I think it's so close to the highway, the seventy-one and ninety-five, and there's a residence there, they said they would not be opposed to an eight foot.
I personally think an eight foot is I, one of my grievances in the city is a lot of the commercial properties and how bright they are. And I think that allowing, like the noise is one thing, but also the height
Mm-hmm.
is another argument. This is a property that is not in the city limits, the, the one next to it, and they really are in a disadvantage right now. But at the same time, I think that we should still encourage an eight-foot fence if council agrees with that. Um, my only concern with it being set back off the property line though, I understand the trees and not wanting to disturb that and but who will maintain that ten feet? Uh, because that's gonna become very difficult to maintain.
It would be, yeah, I would, I would say as, if it's, if it belongs to the tractor supply people, they would be maintaining it.
And the city would be.
They said they may have vehicles going back there, they may have product that may fall over the fence, they would have to go back and get it, have a vehicle go back there to get it. So I'd imagine they would be maintaining that as well.
Okay.
One of the things.
He's their agent, he might be able to answer some of your questions.
Uh, hey, Brandon, one of the things is this fence versus a uh
A masonry.
A masonry wall has come up so much and we've approved this variance. At the next meeting, if, I would like for us to go about changing that ordinance from a, from a masonry wall to a, a fence. We, we have approved every one and it's, we haven't built a masonry wall and yet, so I think we just, you know, let's change that part.
Also, I think possibly that was recommended back then when seventy-one was coming through, where, where two thirty was seventy-one and there was a lot more traffic. Now that there's a lot less traffic, I think it's become less of an issue. And that's why they've been going for the wooden fences.
This is, this is the problem with, we don't really set precedents, but we do. So I assume that as Mr. Senate fills out the, the development, we'll be seeing this request again.
Unless the, and the ordinance is changed.
Yeah, so I Councilman Jenkins, I agree with you, we need to just address this.
I will. This is a discussion for the next meeting as far as like pros and cons.
But I do, I do like your eight-foot thing.
I, I think as someone who lives next to community facility, industrial, and many other various types of uses, I think I'll have some comments in the next meeting.
Did y'all wanna ask him anything? He's the, he's the agent for the tractor supply.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. This is Mayor. Uh, my name is Matt Gaunt, I'm with, I'm a engineer with S E three. Yep, yes, sir. And as, as, as the guy that has to still drive home to Dallas tonight, I will be very, very brief um to, to answer your, answer your questions, sir. Um, the, the main reason why we wanted to move the fence off of the property line is because of the trees. Um, we, we want to be a good neighbor, or my client wants to be a good neighbor. Um, so we don't, we don't want to put in the masonry fence uh or, or, or wall rather. Um, because that really will kill all the trees. Um, the, the fence, we believe we can put it in without uh killing the trees. We wanted to move it off of the property line a little bit just to make sure. But that, that property that would be in between the property line and the fence, that would be the responsible responsibility of tractor supply to do that.
Does this get worded to include the eight feet? Cause I think the eight feet requires a separate variance. Okay, yeah.
Your comments about making it eight feet.
My, my client has no objection to the eight foot.
And we'll just put it in the motion.
That would be your prerogative.
Okay.
I don't have anybody in the public comment, but we're not in there yet, so.
Oh, I think we're about to get there though. Anything else for him? Any questions on anything else? You're dismissed. Okay, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Alright, I close the public hearing, go back into the open meeting. Find my right page. Discussion and action on an ordinance for a variance request for an additional site design standard of a masonry wall or other equivalent noise attenuating barrier for the Smithfield Industrial Park Block One. Lot one, four acres. Property owner, Jesco Construction Incorporated, agent, the Keith Corp, C C C L X X L L C. I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question on procedure.
What did it?
I thought we were doing seven before this, and so we didn't go into the public hearing. Did we ever enter the public here? Okay. Apologies.
Mayor, I'll make a motion on a variance request for an additional site design standard of a masonry wall of uh or other of equi- of equivalent noise attention barrier for Smithville Industrial Park Block One, Lot One. Four acres, property owner, Jesco Construction, Inc., agent, the Keith Corporation, C C C L X X uh limited, and uh the uh fence will be double-sided and eight foot tall.
Point of order, you need to do that in the, the criteria, as in the variance does not.
Point of order of crit- criteria? Oh, I don't even have that.
It's on the.
Yeah.
Or next to.
Don't take it.
Sorry. Okay. Um, I will, I, I'm gonna make a new motion and nu- and uh kill the previous one. I make a motion for approval of a variance request for an additional site design standard of a masonry wall or equivalent uh that will be a eight-foot double-sided fence wall of equal noise attending barrier for Smithville Industrial Park Block One, Lot One. Four acres, property owner, Jesco Construction, Inc., agent, the Keith Corporation, C C C L X X Limited. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and there are no, there are special cert- conditions affecting the applicant's property. And because of the special condition and literal enforcement, the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And the variance serves the spirit of the ordinance and the substant- and substantial justice is done by granting the variance. Did I get it right?
You got it.
Thank you.
You did good, alright.
I second that emotion.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor. And it is approved. Give me back my piece of paper.
No, you're not.
Yes, I've got three, I've got two more variances.
The second was just.
You're, you're on a roll, Jimmy.
That's the only.
Keep it going.
Give me back my papers. The others are zone changes. Number twelve. Discussion and action on ordinance for a zone change from single-family duplex district S F two to mixed residential M R for four-two-one Bunty Street, parcel eight-four-one-six-four, eight-four-six Lomas L, acre sixteen point seven-seven. Property owner, Jan Reinhardt. Ms. Lisa Reinhardt is here to represent her. Would you like to tell us anything? Not today? Okay. Come up here, just come up here and introduce yourself. You love, you love to speak in public.
My name is Lisa Reinhardt and I've been living in Smithfield my entire life. I don't know how long that is.
Twenty-five.
Yes, I've only.
Might give me a motion, so she's all turning red.
Okay. I make a motion that we uh uh approve a zone change from single-family duplex district S F two to mixed residential M R for four-twenty-one Bunty Street, parcel number eight-four-one-six-four, eight-four-six Lumas L, acres sixteen point seven-seven, property owner, Jan Reinhardt, agent, Lisa Reinhardt.
I second that emotion.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor. One, two, three, opposed? Did you write, opposed? Okay. Did you get that? And then we move on to number thirteen, discussion and action on ordinance for a zone change for community facility C F to highway commercial district C three for parcel one-nine-zero-one-zero, Smithville Townsite Block Fifty-three F R. Acres zero point four-four, property owner, Donald Wayne Thomas Junior, agent, Akish Prakash. Okay, any questions? Do I have, do anybody have any questions about this? Okay, somebody give me a motion?
I make a, a motion for a uh ordinance change from community facility C F to highway commercial district C three for parcel one-nine-zero-one-zero, Smithville Townsite Block Fifty-three F R. Acres point four-four, property owner, Donald Wayne Thomas, agent, um I can't say. Akish Prakash?
Akish Prakash?
Prakash, there you go.
There we go.
I second that emotion.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor. One, two, it is approved. I'm just gonna read through these, Mitch. Discussion and action on the ordinance, amending Article One, City of Smithville Code of Ordinance to adopt Section one point oh-three point oh-three-two Rules of Parliament Procedure.
We already did that, we already done that.
Yeah, then you made.
Okay.
Have we done fifteen?
We're at fifteen.
We're on fifteen.
We have the consent agenda if you wanna do it.
I'm just gonna, because it's, I think it's confusing everybody.
We're gonna say your name. Our discussion and, uh, oops, discussion and action on a resolution authorizing the new interim city manager Jeremy Fraser to act as the city's executive officer and authorize representative, representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the home program reservation system with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Any questions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Sir?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the new interim city manager Jeremy Fraser to act as the city's executive officer and authorize representative in all manners pertaining, pertaining to the city's participation in the home program reservation system with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Discussion and action on a resolution.
Just to help just a, a little bit, we originally intended to do a consent agenda, a few of these things have been removed, but there are two left that we could let a couple of big people go home if we did a consent motion on number thirty and thirty-three.
Would you make it?
Mayor, I move that via consent, we approve items thirty and thirty-three. Item thirty being involving the master fee schedule and item thirty-three, approval of the financial report via consent. Uh, any council member who does not want to go this, you say you don't wanna do it and we hit each one individually.
Give me a second, somebody.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor. Okay, we're approved on that one. Thirty and thirty-three were consent, got that one? Okay, so thirty-one, discussion and action, no.
No.
I've done way all.
You're, you're gonna have sixteen. You're sixteen.
Discussion and action on a resolution authorizing city representatives in ma- in matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
Do we have any citizen comments?
Not on this one. The only one we have citizen comments on is on number twenty.
Number twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sixteen, then I just need a, someone to.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Please.
Mayor, I make a motion on a resolution authorizing city representatives in matters pertaining to the city participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
A motion been made in second, all in favor. One, two, it's approved. Number seventeen.
Think we have to do that one.
There was no action taken on number seventeen. Is that correct?
That is correct, but you will have to identify a date with which you can meet to adopt the budget amendments before the thirty-first of October. So you can table for now, but we have to get this done before the thirty-first. Correct, Cynthia?
So.
So that's gonna require a special call meeting?
Yes, sir.
And we can't do it to now, tonight, why? I'm sorry.
I, I don't have the budget amendments made yet. I have lots of adjusting entries and stuff that I'm still doing. Unfortunately, I ran out of time to.
Look at the calendar, go ahead and set the meeting then.
Yeah, because most of the council will be gone the, the last week.
T M L.
Yeah, we're gone the last week and then we just have next.
Is this a type of meeting that can be held quasi-virtually?
I don't think we can do.
You have to be in, in, in person.
No. Cynthia, when, when do you think we'd have it?
I'm, I'm working on them, so, yeah.
So we, okay, just, just for those, cause those of going to T M L, like, we'd have to do it by the twenty-seventh, is that right?
Yes. Yeah.
Jimmy's gotta leave on the twenty-seventh.
Gotta leave, yeah.
My, my calendar's open, I'm just.
I'm leaving the twenty-seventh. I'm, I have to be there the.
During the day, it doesn't have.
So if you wanna do it. Yeah, at noon, if we can do it during.
Can you come over at noon? Can you run in here at noon, Tyrone?
Yes.
Okay, Tyrone could come at noon. How about we do that Friday then?
Around the twenty.
Can we do it that Friday? Um, bring your lunch.
Well, let, let's see if Cynthia.
What?
Friday?
She's look, she's looking.
So I'd have to have it by Monday?
I don't have a watch. I, watch, I don't have a calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm currently working on them, so.
Do you wanna do it that Friday at noon?
Y- yes, I'll, and then I'll get it.
Which Friday?
As soon as.
The twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, that we can do.
Can you add it to the twenty-fourth? Friday the twenty-fourth at noon. You can ride your motorcycle here, or you can ride your lawnmower or however you want to ride. Okay, are we good with that? Oh, wait.
What's the date?
I don't have a life evidently, cause I don't have to live.
Twenty-fourth, Friday the twenty-fourth of October.
High noon.
Okay.
Oh, we're good? Okay.
I will tentatively be okay, I.
It will only take a few minutes. We got three, Jimmy's four, Kathy, you're still looking.
No, I'm good.
Alright, Friday at noon. Will you post and we're good? Alright, got that action. Discussion and action on a ordinance repealing ordinance nine-six-one-two-two-eight-zero and eight-two-nine-one-zero-eight regarding the school zone area at Brown Primary. Anybody got? Anybody got any questions?
I think that's a great idea because Prima and all those, all of those people that live there have been kind of can.
I know, just make me a motion.
Okay, got it.
What was the original point of it and why is it being recommended to be repealed?
It was access for kids to be picked up at the schools and things like that, but it's apparently.
About twenty years ago, you had, you had multiple grades going to that location, uh-oh. But, okay, yes, and so they made one-way streets to help expedite pickup and drop off of, of children, but now there's less people there, it became more of, and, and Jad is here, David, Chief Repka, met with Superintendent Perry, Molly Perry, to go over this and they made the decision, yeah, this makes sense now to go ahead and remove the one-way directional traffic flow from the entire area.
So, that would allow traffic to come off of two-thirty into the neighborhood at Fourth Street, is that correct?
Well, th- this is highway ninety-five.
It's ninety-five down there.
Ninety-five.
Right. Sorry, wrong highway, it's all the same to me.
Never mind. Mayor, I make a motion appealing ordinance nine six one two dash two eight oh and eight two nine dash one oh eight regarding the school zone areas at Brown Primary.
I second that emotion.
Which has been made in second, all in favor. One, two, it's approved.
Nineteen has been pulled.
We done, we done in nineteen, didn't we?
Pulled.
Pulled, okay, so then we're on.
Memorandums of understanding.
Okay, so we're, discussion and action on memorandum of understanding with nonprofits waiving rent and utility fees per resolution two oh two five oh nine five 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 and council action at the September eighth, twenty twenty-five council meeting for Smithville Fire Department, Smithville Area Chamber of Commerce, Lost Pines Artisan Alliance, Smithville Community Gardens, and Smithville Workforce Training Center slash Career Tracks. Do we have somebody signed up to speak?
Yes, I have Caroline Noya first.
Hello, Ms. Caroline.
Good evening again.
Hello, Caroline.
Caroline Noya, seven oh six Mills Street, I'm here representing the Smithville Area Chamber of Commerce this evening. I am respectfully requesting that the agenda item regarding the memorandum of understanding between the city and the chamber be postponed until the December eighth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. We believe additional time is necessary to address several concerns in the proposed MOU. While I am not speaking for all of the other affected nonprofits, I would only guess that they have some of the same questions and concerns that we have. The key issues requiring clarification and revision would be the undefined leased space. The MOU does not specify the square footage being used by the chamber. We are requesting a copy of the building plans to better understand how much space is used by the chamber versus the city, because we do manage some city property in there. There's common areas and the information is critical to determining a fair lease agreement. Also, Smithy Maintenance and Marketing. We believe that this responsibility for Smithy is really, and the related utilities and issues like the painting, the lighting, the social media presence, Smithy does have his own Facebook page, by the way. It should be shared between the city and the chamber and it serves, because it serves both entities. The historical utility and rent data, the chamber is requesting a historical breakdown of rent and utilities for the building to develop an accurate and sustainable budget for future expenses. We request these dates from September thirtieth, because that's when the building was made, was built and we occupied it. We also, this happened going back to nineteen ninety-one, but we're not going back that far. The fair market value determination, clarification is needed on how the rent and utilities will be determined and who will be determining, responsible for determining and establishing the fair market value. We also assert that the MOU should take into account the significant ongoing value the chamber provides to the city in planning and hosting events, serving visitors and dignitaries and serving as the hub of community and business engagement. It may result in the chamber having to invoice the city for, to provide some of these services for the operation of the museum and the visitor center and providing cleaning supplies that we've been, you know, paying for. The chamber used to receive unrestricted funds for economic development and event planning, but that was discontinued a few, several years, or three years ago. A proposed MOU would allow the chamber and the city to clearly define new business relationship responsibilities and expectations. Although year one does not require the chamber to pay rent and utilities, the above items would require discussion and clarification before we can execute a contract. Lastly, since tonight's agenda was post, was posted Friday evening and yesterday was a holiday, we didn't have time to get this information beforehand. So, for these reasons, we are again requesting respectfully that we, this be pushed back to the December eighth meeting. This extension would allow all parties and nonprofits to gather the necessary information to ensure a final agreement that reflects clear, equitable, transparent, and well-supported understanding between the city and the chamber and the other respective nonprofits. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate you bringing all that to the table.
Next, I have Sarah Hickman.
Ms. Sarah, where's, Ms. Sarah, you have tried to get to this microphone all night, come on.
Hello, my name is Sarah Hickman, I'm a business owner here in the lovely town of Smithville, Texas. I love this town and I will fight tooth and nail to keep it the way it is, because I think it's a wonderful community with a lot going on and Robert, I love you and I'm sorry you're going away. Yeah, I'll, next time I'll sing you a song, sorry. Okay, I wanted to talk about, I think I'm in the right part about this. So, my understanding is that the Smithville Fire Department, which is a volunteer fire department and a nonprofit organization, a registered 501(c) and its auxiliary is also a nonprofit, i- is that, is that accurate that you guys want them to pay fifty percent of the, the property? So, that's a lie? I've heard a lie? Oh, I've just, that's, that, okay, I'm just telling you the rumor going around, which is why I've sat here, wait, 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 I'm, hold on, I've only got two. Okay. Oh, okay, I was just gonna say, because I came at six o'clock with the understanding that that was what was gonna happen and I don't understand that, because if they're volunteers and it's a nonprofit, how are they supposed to pay that money? And we need a fire department, as you've seen with the loss of homes lately because of fires. So, I'm, so can you clarify for me that that that's not gonna happen?
I'm on your side.
You're on my side? So, why is that what I've heard? Is that not true? I had a panicked text message from someone that asked me to come here, because.
I don't believe that we can answer questions during this period of time, unfortunately.
You're just gonna make your statement, we don't usually have a back and forth, so.
I promise you, we're gonna be, we're gonna be discussing it.
Okay, all right, and then while I'm here, can I say one other thing?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that Panama Rose at two sixteen Main Street, who is owned by Ann Dobson, who has put over a million dollars into the city, her sidewalk has still not been adjusted and, nor the street in front of us, so I'm just gonna throw that, because I had fifty-one seconds, because I, she brings a lot of value to this town and it makes me sad that all the other roads were done and it looks fantastic, I don't understand why at the corner of Main and the Loop right there, Mosaic and Panama Rose, where my shop is inside Twig, why our sidewalk wasn't fixed nor our street right there, it's just maybe thirty feet of street. That's all, thanks.
Can we do a statement of fact on that, Robert?
Go Fire Department!
Hey, Fire Department. Yeah, the grant funding stopped before those buildings as far as the GLO funding for drainage. Yeah, it was a drainage project that because we tore up the roads and, and the sidewalks, it was only going to be put back where the drainage actually went, so another grant, another time. Yes, ma'am. Sir.
And then next I have Cody Wilson.
Hi, my name is Cody Wilson, I have lived in Smithville for the last eight years, my family and I moved here from Colorado. Anyway. I'm here on behalf of the LPAA. There have been rumors going around, I have not had an opportunity to look at the proposals with the MOA. But the, the rumor and the scuttlebutt is that the building donated by Mary Nichols to the city of Smithville with the specific use of, of the arts, that there's, there's talk about it being charged full market value for rent for this facility that has been used, for my understanding is the last thirteen years, and has brought a lot of value to this community. When my wife and I moved here, this place was a bit of a wellspring in a desert, just driving through the town, seeing all the art, we knew that this was gonna be the place that we wanted to live. My wife is a member of the board for the LPAA, she teaches ceramics classes, and to make it brief, I just think that if you guys really are gonna try to charge rent for a building that was donated for the specific use of the arts locally, I think that it's unconscionable. I know that there are, I know that there are budget shortfalls, I know that we all have taxes, I know that there are a lot of other considerations to be made, but one of the things that makes Smithville special is the arts and the community here and the I came here straight after a twelve-hour shift, I leave my house at four thirty in the morning, I have not seen my family today. I came here to speak on behalf of the ladies. And I just want to say that I really do like this town, everybody that I've worked with in the, in the city has been great, but I do have a letter that I wrote, I have no idea how accurate it is, given what the information that I've had, but I'm gonna try and make it quick. I've heard that the city council is talking about charging all nonprofits in Smithville, including the Art Alliance, Chamber of Commerce, Playhouse, and the Department, full market value. If this is true, I'm utterly shocked at this nonsense, I understand that there are budget shortfalls, but decapitating volunteer organizations that focus on the culture and safety of the residents of Smithville is appalling. Without those resources keeping local culture, arts, and safety, I see no reason to stay here. What draws people to the city? What amenities do you guys offer? What sets this small town apart from all the other ones? I feel like we're doing a disservice. There's a small army of volunteers that give their time to keep this city relevant and give residents a sense of meaning and contribution. Thank you for your time, and I really do believe that if you guys want Smithville to thrive, you will continue supporting the arts and not decapitate them with unreasonable fees that they really don't have the ability to, to make up for. Thank you.
Statement of fact, ma'am. May. There's a narrative out there that this is being done for budgetary reasons and for us to increase revenue, that is not the cause of these actions, this is being brought about by discovery of some legislative issues that we have to deal with, and I'm sure we'll get into more discussion of that, but I just want you to know, this wasn't done to, to generate revenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Robert, I, I have a question, I don't know if it's for you or for the city attorney, but when it comes to the donation of this building to the city, was there any prohibition on rent or allocation of maintenance for funds or anything like that?
And Jill, if she's here, Jill can help me with this, but the original donation of the property stated it had to be, the, the, the house, the Nichols' home, had to be used for, for art. And if ever it was not used for art, then it would revert back to the heirs of the Nichols' family. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that's correct, and I have the deed, I can make copies if you want me to, I can get that for you right now.
Yeah, and I guess my question was a little more nuanced than that. My question specifically, and, and this is not to pick on this nonprofit, but I just want to understand what it actually says specifically is, does it prohibit the city for charging rent or fees related to the usage or maintenance of the building?
I'd have to look at it, I didn't read it thoroughly enough for that question, but I can, I'll make it, I'll print it out and make copies.
Are we into discussion here, are we still hearing comments?
That's it. For comments.
It's all the comments. Uh, yeah.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with this delaying action on this at all, it seems like there's some more clarification that needs to be done and there may be some other potential solutions, particularly.
Need to find some other solution.
Well, let, let's, Nick, you can chime in, but I understand that the ordinance that you passed was to identify these five entities as being eligible to either have rent and utilities greatly reduced or waived completely. The decision to do a MOU with a hundred percent the first year, fifty percent the second, and the ownership of the entity going forward was a discussion that came out of a workshop, you, you don't have to charge these entities anything, it's been proven that these five entities do have a governmental purpose, per the resolution that you passed on September eighth. The decision to or not to charge rent was, was the basis of the MOU. Y'all remember having that discussion?
Yes, we gave you direction to create MOUs to support what the policy decision that we had made.
Which was the hundred percent in the first year waiving and the fifty percent in, in subsequent years, correct?
That was the direction we gave, but to my recollection, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I have one, and I've already talked with you about this, I, I, a long conversation with Claire Beckett today and she was astounded about the, us finding this constitutional amendment, because as, as she and I talked, we realized that there are cities all over this state that are making contributions out of their budget to nonprofits all over. This is not, you know, finding us somewhere in here, I want to know, there is either a lawsuit that was filed and it was done in court and it was, it was bypassed, or there is some reason why this happens, and so I really want to get to the bottom of that.
So, the test that is designed by this court is that it has to have a public purpose and there has to be structure on the donation or the waiving of a fee or however you do it in order to accomplish it. So, you can't just gratuitously grant something, you have to have some sort of agreement or...
You have to have a metric involved, is, of what you're trying to say, there has to be a benefit for us to give them money that they, a donation or something like that.
There, there has to be a public benefit and it has to, the city has to retain control of the funds in order to give it over.
Okay, and again, as I've had this conversation with Claire Beck, and this is county and it may be a little different, but I don't think so. They just give, they, they have so much money that they give, they don't bracket, they don't do anything, they give five thousand to the food bank here in Smithville, they give to all sorts of nonprofits. So, again, I say, I, I understand what you're saying, but I believe somewhere here that we're not seeing, I, I just can't, I cannot, I, I just cannot believe that if all the cities and, that I see in Texas are doing this, there has not been something at the Attorney General's office before now.
I think I, or I'll let you speak first, then I have a comment.
I can continue looking into this issue and have Ryan look into this issue. And come back.
Come back with that, so let's just, let's table.
Let's just table this.
Yeah.
Tabled, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, to say this first, because I think just for everyone to really understand, I, I posted this before and, and it seemed to be well understood, and so I just kind of want to repeat it here. But earlier today, I posted this, it says, "There's been a lot of conversation recently about whether the city should begin requiring nonprofits to pay rent and utilities for the use of city-owned buildings and land. Want to clarify what is actually happening and how we got here. The proposal came up during budget process, not as a directive from council, but as an option presented by the city manager to help address budget pressures. During that conversation, we realized that allowing certain nonprofits to use city property without payment may put us in violation of the Texas Constitution. In response, and as a good faith effort to support these organizations while also bringing the city into compliance, we are implementing a phased approach over two years. The first year will keep things as they are, in the second year, we will begin a stair-step transition, requiring nonprofits to cover fifty percent of the rent and utilities." I was one of, I was the one who proposed this approach, because I recognized the important work these nonprofits do in our community and wanted to give them time to prepare. That said, the Texas Constitution is clear, for a nonprofit to receive public resources without direct payment, there must be a quantifiable. That said, the Texas constitution is clear. For a nonprofit to receive public resources without direct payment, there must be a quantifiable public benefit. This benefit must be measurable with specific goals and accountability. It cannot be based on feelings or general goodwill. That is why agreements like the MOUs must be tied to outcomes and allow the four adjustments if those outcomes are not being met. I support these organizations and want to see them succeed at the same time of fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the city complies with state law and uses taxpayer resources responsibly. I believe we can do both. We can support our nonprofits and remain in compliance, but we need to act quickly and thoughtfully to find the right path forward. One carve-out is the Smithville Volunteer Fire Department. It appears to be structured as a nonprofit, not an official city department like the police or library, yet it has its own light item in the city budget. If it is a nonprofit, then the same legal requirement should apply. That said, the fire department is clearly an example of an organization that provides a measurable and essential public service. Given this unique situation, I believe we should task our interim city manager with researching the structure of our relationship with the fire department and evaluating whether that relationship should be revised to better reflect the critical role they play in our public safety.
We're going to table this for the moment and come back with more information because I feel like there has to be an answer out there. We just haven't uncovered it. And go ahead.
Counsel, do we want to table this till December for when we were talking about with, with the Chamber of Commerce?
Good, that before we move forward, I, I've wanted to, particularly for the Lost Pines Artists and Alliance and, and this information that we just received on how the city received the property in the first place, first place, if, if it's not being used for the intent purposes to foster municipal growth in the city of Smithville and to promote fine arts, if we're not performing in a way that's satisfactory, if it were to revert to the heirs, then they could handle it. That might be something that we would want to look into. I'm throwing that out. That's all I'm trying to say.
And I think also for the city attorney to, that there is a municipal growth element of that and promote the fine arts. So it is a, I think there's a lot of nuances here that we need to understand and make sure the MOU is structured appropriately.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we table this until the December council meeting. Item number 20.
Yep, we have, we're going to table it for now and come back with more information. We're going to gather all the emails, gather everybody's opinion, everybody's thoughts. We're not passing it tonight, okay?
Yeah.
These, these all bring great resources to our community. And as the young man said, I don't know where he went. This is part of the, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. But this is what sets us apart from other towns. I apologize, sir. Yeah, so we need to look at this deeper. Yes.
I do believe we need all the legal that we. Legal that we can do.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Y'all all gone to Mary Nichols Center?
Yeah.
I bring kids there all the time. Yes, why we.
So mayor has a motion to postpone the agenda item until the December meeting. I second that motion.
A motion been made in second. All in favor to table two. You're good? Thank you. And I have your number, so. Okay. Let's see.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Discussion and action on memorandum of understanding between the city of Smithville and Smithville Little League. Is anybody here from Smithville Little League? There you are, Ms. Smith. Don't you have a kid with you? Should go to sleep?
No.
No. Go ahead, please.
Yes.
All right, guys, we're going to continue on. Thank you. Go ahead. Does anybody have any questions about Little League? Have you been over there to see the concession stand?
So are we finished? Are, are we done with the concession stand?
Like so close.
So close?
Close.
So close, like this close.
So when are you going to have a grand opening and everything?
It's coming. You're cooking. You're cooking. Anybody have any questions for her? It's pretty set. You've read it.
Yeah, Council Mayor, this sets up a, a, a understanding facilities use agreement between the city of Smithville and the, the Smithville Little League. The improvements that they've made over the years and will continue to make going forward are, are significant. Thank you for all the work that you do to help us maintain that facility. It's a partnership. And this document memorializes that partnership. It's a five-year contract with the Evergreen year-over-year annual renewal. And we asked a $300 fee in return. We get all the services listed in this agreement. That's kind of bumper sticker.
Just updates, kind of updates our MOU that we currently have. And we did increase, increase our fees to the city just for the help that y'all provide and the maintenance they provide and all that, so.
Outstanding.
Outstanding. Give me a motion, somebody.
So mayor, I make a motion on a memorandum of understanding. I make a motion on a memorandum of understanding between the city of Smithville and the Smithville Little League.
I'll second that emotion.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor. It is approved. Thank you for hanging out with us.
Yes, thank you.
Yay, 21. I am just, I think we're on 22. 22 has been done. All right, discussion and action on Smithville Workforce Training Center Career Tracks proposed lease agreement between CyberTech's tenant and Career Tracks landlord. Welcome, Tom and Janice.
Well, let me start by saying that I'm not envious of your long meetings. But I do want to say that we really appreciate it. The last several weeks have been a real, a real strain on the council and the mayor. And I just want all of you to know that we're here in the community. We really appreciate what you're doing.
That's nice.
Sorry about my text that told you to hurry up.
Yeah, I was, I was at the soccer game. We had awards in soccer and I told, I texted Mitch. I said, listen, I'm going to go to the game. I'll be there by seven. Text me if I'm going to miss it. He texts and says, well, it's moving fast. You need to come. And so that was an hour and a half or two hours ago. So.
You know, Billy is a jokester. You don't really get to know him. He does do jokes.
Okay, so I, I'm Tom Etheridge. I'm here with Janice Bruno. We're both here on behalf of Career Tracks. I'm chairman of the board currently and Janice is the executive director. I will be respectful of your time. We're here to answer any questions. You have a pretty extensive letter there outlining what's been proposed. The board met recently and approved an LOI with CyberTech, which is a training company in Austin to occupy 100% of the new building that was constructed with mostly grants, but also a 10% match from the city. That building is slated to be delivered, I believe, Janice, at the end of, in about two weeks. I think there's a hard stop, so they're getting close. So the board met, the Career Tracks Board met recently and unanimously approved this LOI. And so what we're here to do, as outlined in the letter, is to ask the council to take really two actions. One is to recognize and consent to this lease and to Career Tracks's landlord, and then also remove the 60-day termination provision that's in the MOU that's currently in effect. And then also to provide changes to the MOU to allow CyberTech to actually pay for their utilities because the current MOU has the city paying for the utilities and CyberTech in the lease has agreed to pay the utilities, just like a normal commercial customer. Janice, do you want to add anything else to that?
Good evening, counsel. Janice Bruno, Executive Director, Career Tracks, 800 Burleson Street. Some of you probably remember when CyberTech visited us almost two years ago. So we've had a great relationship with CyberTech Institute. They're a technology institute that wants to come to Smithville to offer classes, medical assistant, HVAC, network engineering. We've had many, many of our students having to travel to Austin to take a lot of those courses. So now they're willing to come to Smithville and invest in Smithville, 42-month lease, about $252,000. And of course, they'll pay the utilities back to the city. Very, very excited to be joining us. They're also up in Colleen, Texas, where they've also expanded. They've been in business about 25 years. Do you have any questions?
I just want to let you know, I talked to, what my call to Clara Beckett this week was about the, this, and she said this meets all the, all the criteria of what the, the county handing the property over. Everything's good. I wanted to make sure that they were on board with it. So to me, it looks good.
You're saying that we don't need to waive rent for you and we get a new utility customer?
This is correct.
Wow.
Well, well, to be clear, I mean, I, I want to make sure that's not actually accurate. We have an MOU that goes seven years and we do not pay anything. Career Tracks has, the MOU waives the facilities fee, so we don't pay anything. The grant that was used to fund construction of this building restricts any revenue that comes from that building to be reinvested back into workforce training. So to the discussion that had happened earlier tonight about revenue being generated to the city on property, this particular property was constructed with a grant and had some restrictions to it. So we contemplated at the board meeting, you know, whether we could share some of that revenue with the city. But we cannot. We cannot do that. So just to be clear, if, if that was not the case, we were prepared to come in and provide some of those dollars to the city, although as I said in the letter, it really is a really cool situation. It allows us not only to do what was intended to be done on that property, but the, the lease payments that are coming allows us, as Career Track, reinvest and leverage that to even train more. So it's really a, I think it's a really unique deal. And Janice and Jill and obviously the people that were involved in the grant, the grantor, a lot of people deserve a lot of credit for this. And this, I think it's a really cool thing, the way it's come together.
We appreciate the thought anyway.
I do have a question on the waiving of the 60-day termination notice. This agreement you have with the, the third party, CyberTech's is only for 42 months, just shy of four years. If, say they cancel their, their lease, they pull out early, Career Tracks, for some reason, start, stops performing as expected whenever this MOU, I can understand why you wouldn't want to have the 60-day termination if you have a paying tenant. But if that paying tenant leaves or Career Tracks isn't performing as expected, I feel like we are removing some of our ability to ensure that there is performance in this contract. Is that true?
Career Tracks does not have any issues with removing the 60-day termination notice so long as CyberTech's lease is still in effect. The purpose for the request is we as landlord are going to be making reps and warranties to the tenant and we can't have the city terminate our ability to exercise and perform on those. So if you wanted to amend it to only pertain to the 60-day termination only being valid during the period of time when CyberTech was leased, we're fine with that.
I'm okay with that.
Point of order. We are on 23, right? We have two to do here, 23 and 24?
We're on 24, aren't we? Oh, we're, oh, I'm sorry.
We got 23 and 23.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we have two.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So let's get a motion for number 23. Discussion and action.
Okay, mayor, I make a motion on, uh, and on Smithville Workforce Training Center Career Tracks proposed lease agreement between CyberTech's tenant and Career Tracks landlord, that we approve this motion?
Uh, second that emotion.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor. One, two. That one's approved. And now the second part, which they've already discussed.
Yes. I make a motion for a memorandum of understanding between the city of Smithville and Career Tracks dated November 13th, 2023. Do we need to put the rest of this in red in there, Robert?
You should.
Okay, to remove the 60-day termination notice, except in the event that Career Track ceases to exist and to provide that under the CyberTech's lease, tenant will establish and maintain a utility count with the city and pay customary charges for city utilities.
There you go. Give me a second, somebody.
I second that emotion.
Motion been made in second.
Before we vote, I have a question. I don't believe, I personally won't be able to vote for it in that current form because I, the caveat that they were willing to give that the 60-day termination, except in the event that Career Track ceases to exist, I think that should be changed to to remove the 60-day termination notice as long as there is, like CyberTech's.
As long as CyberTech's the tenant.
Yes.
Mayor, would you allow me to make a comment while the motion's out there? I think that if all you did, I think the way it's written and the way that you made the motion is accurate. If you just simply added an additional condition under 2A that is in addition to as long as Career Track ceases to exist, also that the CyberTech lease remains in effect. If you did that, then I think that's consistent.
Uh, well, redo it.
I will amend my motion that as long as the lease with CyberTech remains in effect, the 60-day motion is gone. Is that right? Say that again, say it again.
Determinate, early termination. 60-day termination is amended.
The 60-day termination.
Occur in the event that, that Career Track ceases to exist or the CyberTech lease is no longer active.
Okay, I'll remake my motion that as long, I mean, my amendment, as long as the CyberTech lease is established, the 60-day termination lease is void. If the, if, if the lease is gone, then the, the 60-day termination lease is enforced. Is that correct? Did I get that right?
I think I may be able to state it a little clearer.
Jennifer, do you?
Do you have what we need?
Will you repeat, will you repeat the motion, please, Jennifer?
You just add it to A.
Add it to A.
Is a motion to approve removing the 60-day termination notice, except in the event that Career Tracks ceased to exist and as long as CyberTech's lease remains in effect.
That's what we need. That's exactly.
Good with that? I think I got a first and a second, don't I? No, I don't.
I, is that the full motion? Because B was also stated earlier.
Yeah, B is also on that too. I just need a second for the amendment, amended motion.
Second that emotion.
Okay, so now we, all in favor? All in favor, one, two, three, four, five. Jennifer, are you good?
I think so.
You think so? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Where, I think we're going to take a yellow sheet break. Where, I think we're gonna take a yellow sheet break.
I have no idea. All right, we're gonna come back to life here, it is 9:04.
We have not done 25.
No. We did it.
For the jamboree? Okay.
28.
So 25, 25's been pulled, 26 has already been discussed, 27 already discussed, 28. Obvious on our, discussion and action on impact fee process, okay.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor and Council and citizens that are remaining, thank you for hanging in. It was requested that we talk about where we are in the impact fee process. We have, per action, we've identified an, an impact fee advisory committee that has not met yet. One of the key components of the establishing impact fees is the completion of the rate study, which reuse and ESG are going to kick off next Wednesday. And 90 to 120 days after that, they will have their rate study complete to see where our rates compare and where they should be as opposed to where they are. So the recommendation here is to let, um, reuse and ESG kick off the rate study. In parallel, you can maybe have a meeting or two, maybe just one to kind of establish, the organizational structure of the advisory committee. It is a five-member committee that will meet at some point in time to help develop these fees.
Asking a question because the intent of this thing was to get it done by the end of the year. I know the two primary initiatives were the land use plan and the capital improvement plan. Refresh me on why we needed the rate study?
Yeah, the, the rate study establishes what, um, your sewer tap fees, your water tap fees, are, are what you're charging for electricity, water, uh, and sewer, are, are those at the right levels compared to what, yeah, others are charging? So yes, you're correct, we have to do a, a, a land use and, and a CIP, capital improvement.
So that wouldn't, I'm sorry, Robert, that wouldn't preclude them doing the work on the land use assumptions in the capital improvement plan?
I'm sorry, say what?
That would not, that, it shouldn't keep them from addressing the land use plan and the capital improvement plan.
No, that's correct, but it does tie hand in hand with the comp plan, which is over and, and is supposed to be completed by December 31st. So everything is kind of coming together. I did include the, the impact fee process in, in, in the packet that you have and that that went to the community so they can take a, take a look at what that process is and where we are in that. And where we are in that is ground zero at this point, besides the identification of a five-member advisory committee.
Whenever we were looking earlier this year, there was legislation that may have been moving through the state that would have made certain funding mechanisms difficult. And at that time, I thought we understood that the land use plan was something that could be pushed forward from the comprehensive plan. Like, they had already done it, they were willing to provide it earlier and all that kind of good stuff.
Uh, the actual comp plan, the, the RCP plan that we're doing now actually leveraged the wastewater, um, treatment facility expansion study that BEFCO did, which identified your areas of future expansion and growth using a 2% growth model. So, um, Langford actually took that plan and is putting it into the RCP or the comp plan going forward. So did that answer, confirm your, 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 your question?
Kind of made me more confused, because you're saying, Mitch's question was answered with, it's not done yet, it'll be done at the end of the year, but it sounds like they're just using what we already have?
They're using what BEFCO utilized for the future growth in addition to the, the pieces of stakeholder input that they're, they're meeting with the actual landowners to see whether or not that, that BEFCO identified as potential areas for growth based upon the size of the acreage is actually for sale. And it may not be because of generational or whatever the reasons they may or may not want to come into the city or to be a part of city development, that's still to be determined. So all these things are gonna come together around Christmas time that you can unwrap and we can move forward with at that time. You're not laughing, I'm trying to ease up the tension here, thank you very much, all right. So to answer your question, short question, there's been no work done on this with respect to meeting with the impact fee advisory committee actually having a meeting at, at this point?
I don't know, is there an action?
Question I need for the committee now.
You still have to have the committee to push the impact fee forward based upon the, the rules regarding impact fees. It requires that you have a committee to establish these, these various things that are listed in the process.
That's by state law.
By law.
So there's no action regarding?
No, you just wanted an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So no action taken? And we're on to number 29, did we do 29 yet? No, we didn't. Discussion and action on options for 2022 tax note deposit and if the city will go out for a bid.
Okay, Mayor, Council and remaining citizens, this was an action left over from a couple of budget discussions ago. Uh, actually, we went out for the bank depository, um, bid. The question came up, well, can we use some of that money when the tax note was issued? Can you take some of that money and deposit into a high-bearing interest yielding account or a CD? The answer is yes. There was caution on, on, um, the part of SAMCO saying that if you do tie whatever monies you may choose to put into a CD or a high-yield interest-bearing account, you want to not limit yourself, you know, don't make the timeframe such that it's more than the three-year period or what you may need due to contingencies or planned projects that you have against the money allocated for the tax note, if that made sense. So, yeah, you can say hypothetically.
That's an update, then?
Yes, sir.
From what we were given, we can go into a CD, then?
You can take a, this arbitrary amount, earn $1,000 for, for a year and a half period or a year period, but you don't need to exceed that because you have three years to spend the tax note.
Yeah, well, I, I think somebody, one of the banks presented that they could do at the time a 15-month, 4%, and they would just, if we wanted to pull the money, we could pull the money, so.
Yes, you do have to shop that, though.
That's what, yeah, I had said do an RFP at the time, but I'm glad that we've got this updated information. I think we should go out for bid on this.
Okay, and then that's, was just an update, correct? Action on this item.
You have to decide what amount you want in the timeframe that you, you know, that you want to do it and then develop an RFP, uh, to push out for people to respond to.
So what's the amount of funds we'll be depositing? Is it two separate deposits?
I think the question originally was, we're gonna be getting this money anyway and it's going to be going into an account anyway. So it was, wasn't necessarily maybe about a CD or it was just making sure that it gets into, that other banks have the opportunity to bid on it as previous council had.
Yeah, I mean, this gives us more opportunity now. We were just talking about whether or not it could go into a different account, but we, at the time, we thought we couldn't put it into a CD or something that could, I mean, 4% would be significant. And, and what I'm saying is, we got two different funding sources, correct? We've got utility and, is it two different amounts that are coming in? Can we, they gotta be.
This is only on the tax note that we were talking about. We were only talking about tax note funds, putting the, if we could put them into a CD. That's what we were doing. We're not, we were not talking about utilities or anything else.
What's the utility bond?
There's two different sources of.
Not bonds, sorry.
Yeah, the tax note, two different funding sources. Do they have to be segregated?
You, you have, uh, two million that's going into the general fund and one million's coming out of the utility fund with a payback of $6.35 per customer per month, okay? You can take some of those funds from, and I recommend we use SAMCO to help us structure whatever RFP we do, from whatever account that you, that you want, it just, it just has to be put back in when you actually need the money before the three-year period, so.
So that we would give direction for SAMCO to create an RFP?
I, I don't think that we need to determine amounts or what type of accounts they go in, but just the fact that we're opening this up to for other banks.
Yeah, that's my deal, let's, we, we make it so that it can open up and go to other banks at, when we are doing something else at a different time. Where we have it now, we've already got money, you know, where we think it's gonna be allocated and everything else. I would rather not take some out in case we have to all of a sudden say, hey, we need, we need to spend that because it's come to that point in time.
Well, i- i- if we receive a bid that says, we'll put you in a 15-month CD for 4%, and if you need to make an early withdrawal, it's okay, then, then we're not restricted. So, so the direction is that we tell SAMCO to come up with, to, what do you say? Create a, an RFP for the purpose of.
Depositing.
Depositing funds, do we want it restricted to tax note funds or?
Yeah, yeah, I keep saying bond, but I'm meaning tax.
That's where I get lost when you need a bond to me. I can make that motion, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we direct SAMCO to create an RFP for the purpose of depositing tax note proceeds.
Discussion. In case, in case they don't do that activity, I mean, they're pretty much in the financial market game. This is more, could be an in-house job.
Yeah.
Give that as an option. If, if SAMCO doesn't, we can do this in-house, we've done RFPs before.
Yes, we can just send out to the banks, because that's what we do every, what, two? How often we go out for bid? Every, every five years, we go out for bid to banks.
For the bank depository, this is something different.
This is unique to the tax note proceeds.
We can create the wording to send out for bids, correct? Yeah, we could.
Yeah, I was trying to make it generic enough where we just direct SAMCO to create the RFP for our, to deposit the tax note proceeds.
If SAMCO does that.
In the case SAMCO doesn't do that, then we would direct the city manager to draft the RFP.
I second that a motion.
Okay, a motion been made in second, all in favor. One, two, three, four, five. Jennifer, do you have that?
Yes.
And you're good?
I'm a no.
And then, uh, opposed? Got it. We had one opposed, well, okay.
Thirty-one, we're at 31.
We've done 30, right?
We've done 30, yes.
Okay, 31, discussion and action on a Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, Council, Mayor, we, we did have, um, a, a, a board.
We have a.
We, we have the structure for a Parks and Recreation Board in your packets for consideration. It's a five-member board, um, two of those members would be, um, one would be the Rec Center Director, the other would be the Public Works Director, and then three at-large members that you would nominate, um, after the application process, so.
That makes sense.
But I guess what you're looking at now, are you happy with the creation of the board as written in your packets?
Go ahead.
So, uh, for starters, given that our existing programs with the Recreation Center Department, do not currently reflect all segments of the community, we don't have those programs and services in place, particularly with seniors and adult programs. So I would like to suggest that the Parks Director and the Rec Center Director act in advisory capacity so we can fill those spots with two more Smithville residents, which will, um, effectively help to provide a varied representation of all segments of the community. While department directors can provide in-depth knowledge of various of operations and budgets, it can also compromise the independence of the Advisory Board, whose primary role is to act as an independent check on the Parks and Rec, Rec Departments' performance and the Advisory Board's ability to provide an unbiased community perspective. And to me, there's a huge conflict of interests that can occur when directors sit on a board that was established for the very purpose of overseeing them and their operations. For these reasons, I feel the city department directors are better suited to serve in an advisory capacity at the request of the Advisory Board. So I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
This is a little long, so bear with me. Under Section 2 of the Ordinance, Section 1.04.178 created, I believe the paragraph should be revised to read effective November 1st, 2025. The Parks and Recreation Board is hereby created. the Parks and Recreation Board is hereby created and shall consist of five members with staggered terms. All members shall be residents of the City of Smithville, and no member of the board may serve more than two consecutive, successive terms of office. The terms of each place are established below. Number A, place one term, remove the sentence and shall be held by the Public Works Director or their designee. Number B, place two term, remove and shall be held by the Recreation Center Director or their designee. Section 1.04.179 under Organization, revise the second sentence to read, the Parks and Recreation Board consists of five members and all shall be residents of the town and not be members of city council or a city employee. Remove sentence five that states that the Public Works Director shall serve as the Chair of the Board. Revise sentence six to read, the Parks and Recreation Board shall select from its members a Chair, a Vice Chair, and a Secretary. And under Section 1.04.181 procedures, number C, the Parks and Recreation Board shall report quarterly, it said annually, quarterly to the city council throughout, through the Chair.
I agree with-
With the City of Smithville, only because when we had people speak, they were from like the school district kind of area. So I didn't know if that would be something, what do you feel about?
I think we need to discuss extending, expanding those boundaries either to our ETJ or the school district so that we have, because people come from outside the city to use the Rec Center.
So I- Mayor, I'll second this so that we can discuss this.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
There we go. Now we can discuss. Thank you for keeping me straight.
No, you're good.
Okay, but I would like to do maybe the, um, school district zones, boundaries, is that?
It's really big, though.
That's really big.
Want to go out that far? It's huge.
I mean, I don't know how you do it. If you say seven, eight, nine, five, seven, it's still gonna-
ETJ, what, I don't know.
ETJ adds a half mile.
Well, of, of the youth people that come in, they're mainly in our school district. They're not anywhere else. So that, to me, that's, we need to be part of the school district. That needs to be the whole thing of it. I know that-
What if we open it up similar to how we did the impact fee, uh, committee, where there is one person from the ETJ, but in this case, it could be one, one of the board members, or, yeah, the Advisory Board members is from the school district, from within the Smithville School District. So four are within the City of Smithville, and then one is from within the boundaries of the school district, Smithville.
So place four, we would say, would be a member of the, uh, school, what would be from the area of the school district.
So, so that means that all five could end up being within the city limits?
They could.
Oh, technically, yeah.
So, so, so when I go to the extent that you say one of the places would be from, never mind, I'm gonna stay out of it. That's pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Should we just say that one is outside the city but within the school district?
I don't know.
I think you just do the expanded definition and then-
There's just so many people that come to the Rec Center that have a lot of great ideas. I don't want to exclude anybody.
I think so. I, I mean, I completely agree with that, but I also, I think where I'm at is the taxpayers are the one that are funding the initiative. And if we have an over-representation by the school district versus the City of Smithville, we need to hear outside perspective for sure, the ones that are actually using it and benefiting and paying fees and all that.
So the average would be, at least four of the places must reside within the Smithville city limits.
And then one.
That sounds good.
You want to say city limits or within the ETJ that adds a half mile?
City limits.
City limit. So four of the places would be within the city limits to-
Within the school district, whatever.
Yeah, and then the fifth would be within the school district.
Yeah. Sorry, Kathy. You withdraw and make another?
I think you just want to make a motion.
To amend?
To amend it to add.
What I have, I could tell you what I have. You're gonna get me yours word for word, but then the amendment, from what I understand is, four are within the city limits, four of the board members are within the city limits. One board member can be within the school district.
Yeah.
That sounds-
Yeah, at least four within the city limits.
And then one within the school district.
Are you good with that, Kathy? Okay, so I had a motion and a second, correct? Am I?
Now you have to amend, you have to do the amendment.
Okay.
She just worded, I second the amendment.
Word what she had.
Right, I second the, I second the amendment.
Okay.
So amend the previous motion to state that four of the members will be, uh, Smithville residents and one member will be within the school district boundaries.
Second.
A motion has been made in second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Did you raise your hand? Five. All, yay.
I'm tired.
That was thirty-one. Discussion and action on authorizing expenditures from tax notes per ordinance 2025697. Staff, to rep, to present any requests? Do we have anybody presenting a request?
We have the two listed right here, correct?
Yeah.
That is for the Rec Center.
I can go ahead and make the motion that we approve it.
I, I would like to, uh, request that we go ahead and authorize to get our new chairs. And if she needs any money for the audio visual in here to go ahead and upgrade, because I'm getting lots of complaints about people not hearing the, the video getting fuzzy, and that's in the tax note under that one line.
I, I would word it, but you'll be better at, I don't know what you said.
Okay, all right, okay.
Give us a motion.
All right. I make a motion that we approve, uh, tax note expenditures for the Rec Center HVAC system from the 2023 tax note.
No, it's 2025.
Twenty-three.
It's twenty-three? I'm reading it.
Oh.
And, and that we, uh, approve water and sewer line extension. Oh, have we even discussed this? We have not discussed that, and we do need to discuss that.
Which is my command, sir.
I'm sorry, I would have just did, but I think it needs to be discussed.
Bring it to light, Jimmy.
All right, here, you want me to do it, Robert?
No, I've, I've got it. Go ahead and show the, uh, the, the diagram, please. So Tractor Supply is in need of water and sewer. Uh, the cost, I, I've got quotes for both, based in the three hundred and eighty linear feet of water. It's a twelve-inch line that'll go to the, the property. Can you? It'd be easy if we call up the, uh, yeah, she's coming with it. Well, in your packets, there is a diagram-
Yes, there is.
Of, of where this is going to go.
I don't have a diagram.
Hold on, I got it. It's over here.
Oh, we're going backwards.
No, it's, it's over here a mile. It's junk. Here's the-
All right, this, this is what we're looking at. This is, uh, Highway ninety-five.
Here we go.
On the east side, coming down from Mixology to the corner of the property line with where Tractor Supply is going to put their, uh, their facility. It's three hundred and eighty linear feet for a twelve-inch line. It's ninety-nine thousand dollars for construction. Uh, we do feel we can save a lot of money by having Edwards Group do the digging, uh, to bring that down at least fifteen thousand dollars. And even more money, there's a proposal by Tax Dot, um, they want us to bore. Yeah, you, you see the horseshoe on, on the right, the gravel road. They wanted us to bore. We can get them to open cut. That'll save money and, and time. Uh, it's just a gravel road. You know, we can put the water line down, then recover it, so that's gonna save money. And then the other portion of this project would be to, uh, do a bore beneath SH ninety-five from our existing six-inch force main, which is on the west side, underneath Highway ninety-five and pop out right in front of where, um, Snot and Tractor Supply are going to go. That's a thirty-eight thousand dollar bill, and when you're boring ninety-five, yeah, that's probably, we really can't get involved and reduce that by doing it ourselves, because we don't have a boring machine. So that's gonna have to go out for bid. Okay, the total cost of all of this, engineering, soup to nuts, womb to tomb, is a hundred and fifty-some-odd thousand, a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and we're gonna save at least ten to fifteen by doing the work ourselves on the water line. So I'm requesting a hundred and fifty in aggregate from the 2023 tax note, which has a hundred and fifty-eight thousand of the interest earned to date. So we can utilize that interest to pay for this project that will allow Tractor Supply to happen.
And, and truthfully there, where all this is happening, I believe, I'm all, I believe there's going to be a, a chance for other economic growth and development that will happen off all of this. This is just gonna, this is gonna make it so that these people that, that are farther down by Mixology, that open place in there, we might be able to do, to rig some annexation out of all of this.
Force main, is that sewer?
Yes, yes.
Jamie, you had me at hello?
Yeah, I got-
Where does, does the sewer go south or does it go north to the airport?
All right, it, it's coming from M.D. Anderson going to Gasly. This is the one that also will tap in when the Smithville Truck Stop in Sonic, and when it kicks off, we're gonna bore, uh, one fifty-three. We'll tap into this line that goes to Gasly. So from a capacity standpoint, we're, we're fine with being able to put Tractor Supply and the, um, the other possible businesses that come down this way.
Okay, I'll redo, I'll redo my motion completely. Start from the beginning. Yes, it happens, doesn't it? It's late, sorry. All right, I make a motion that we authorize expenditures, expenditures from the tax notes for, uh, the Rec Center HVAC repair, thirteen thousand from the 2023 tax note. Water and sewer line extensions for Tractor Supply, a hundred and fifty K from the 2023 tax note, and expenditures for chairs and AV equipment in the council room to be determined out of the 2025 tax note.
I second that a motion.
Motion been made in second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. It's approved. You get all that, Jennifer?
Mayor, can we make an action for the agenda items in the future? I believe we had asked previously that the tax note approval spendings be moved to the very front for the city staff. Can we just make sure that we're doing that?
Love that.
Oh, yeah.
Y'all love that. Y'all wouldn't?
There's not a whole lot more we can stack at the top of this thing today.
Done the financial report and the consent agenda?
Where are we? The City Council will hold an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551074, to discuss personnel interim city managers' employment contract and economic development department staff. And the second thing is the City Council will hold an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551071, to consult with the attorney regarding pending and contemplating, contemplated litigation related to infrastructure, First Amendment auditor, and loss of city property.
Mayor, I'd like to say that I will not be involved in thirty-four. You're talking about the interim city manager's contract and economic development. Is that an accurate statement that the council wishes?
We are fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thirty-five, I will be there.
Will the interim city manager be involved in any of these?
Could he be in both places?
And actually, that was posted before we, um, had our last meeting, and it's, it's really not, we're not discussing his contract because his contract is-
Oh, we did.
And it's not, we're not talk, there's nothing to talk about.
I would, I would like to have him in for the-
For the economic development discussion, yeah, please.
I think you're in the whole time. So we are going into closed meeting at nine thirty-four.
All right, I call this meeting back, uh, closed, uh, oh, Lord. And back to my, I'm back to the open, call the meeting back to order, back to the open meeting. All right, so on the first action, the ten twenty-four, I must be a minute later than everybody. Okay, the city council will hold an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one government code in accordance to the authority contained in section five five one oh seventy-four to discuss personnel interim city managers employment contract and economic development department staff, no action taken. In the second part, the city council will hold an executive session pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one government code, in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one oh seven one to consult with an attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation related to infrastructure, First Amendment auditor and loss of city property, and no action taken. This adjourns our meeting. What a meeting.